Okay, you're up.
Okay. Called early, irregular Thursday, November 13th. We need to take the city council stand for the pledge.
...... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his law, the liberty and justice for all.
And a motion and a second for the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Scott, Dave. Any discussion, changes? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Here is five to zero.
Recap for the closed session?
We had another closed session last night. Oh, that's right. Mayor. Well, we can move it. I mean...
No one's reading it?
Huh?
Don't have to read back?
Yep, just got to read that. Do you want to bring it over for you, Mayor, or what do you want to do?
No, I've got the...
The package should be page two or three there.
Yeah, I can read it.
Thank you very much.
Oh, that's right, we had two of them. Okay. On October 28th, 2025, Dayton City Council will close meeting pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D point 03 for the purpose of considering strategy for labor negotiations, including negotiation strategies or developments or discussion and review of labor negotiation proposals. Persons present at the closed meeting were Mayor Dennis Fisher, council member Scott Solanek, Sarah Van Aston, Stephanie Anderson, David Fashant, city administrators Actowd, Assistant City Administrator Amy Bentin, City Attorney Amy Schmidt. During the closed meeting, the city council considered labor agreement proposal from the Minnesota Teamsters Public and Law Enforcement Employees Union, Local Number 320, presenting essentially supervisory employees. At the conclusion of their consideration of the terms of the labor agreement proposal from the Teamsters, the city council directed the city administrator as to how to respond to the proposed terms during ongoing negotiations with the Teamsters. That was a lot that said virtually nothing. Okay, second one. On October 28th, 2025, Dayton City Council held a closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D 0.05 subdivision 3C3 for the purpose to develop or consider offers or counter offers for the purchase or sale of real or personal property located at PID 0912022430041. Persons present at the closed meeting were Mayor Dennis Fisher, council members Scott Solanek, Sarah Van Aston, Stephanie Anderson, David Fashant, city administrator Zach Dowd, city assistant city administrator Amy Bentin, city attorney Amy Schmidt. During the closed meeting, the city council considered the offer for the purchase of real property. City council gave direction to the city administrator on how to proceed with the ongoing negotiations. All right. That's the recap. Need a motion and a second for the consent.
Can we pull an item out now, or do we wait till after?
Actually, yeah, we probably should have done it before. Wouldn't be set up each end, but we can do it now.
Can we pull out item J, please?
Absolutely.
Out of consent?
Okay. So we will pull J out. I need a motion and a second for the rest of consent.
I'll second.
Dave, Stephanie. And then, any other discussion?
Just one little comment. The ONG, the donation from Hunter Enterprise, it seems a little cheesy the way it's worded. We got a $15 donation. It's actually a fee for having a unit in the Holly Dazzle, I believe.
Holly Dazzle, yeah. It's a optional fee, so this one, it was miscommunicated when we received the check.
Okay.
And I thought, hmm, this seems odd to be accepting this as a donation, but we will do that going forward for all of them this year, and then I'll check with our attorney and Zach on how we actually, because I don't think we can accept an optional dollar amount without acknowledging that it's a donation.
It's actually a donation.
So it's not, it's not meant to be...
Either that or just attach a fee to the unit.
Right, yeah, I don't, yep. We'll have to fix that.
Yeah. Scott, do you have any more on that, on consent?
No, no.
Anybody else?
Stephanie did it for me.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have anything for consent? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Sends us past five to zero, and I'll move J to after cross services. Is that all right?
Sure, so you want to do open forum and then the updates?
Right, just go through that stuff. Okay, so that gets us to open forum. Do we have anybody here for open forum? Okay, open forum limited to three minutes. For non-agenda items, state your name and address. No council action will be taken, and items will be referred back to staff.
Keith Rover, 113th and Fernbrook. I know in meetings past, we've had some discussion and some worry about Three Rivers Park District purchasing more property in the city of Dayton, and I share that same concern. I did a little online survey on head of county's interactive webpage, just looking at the different properties that they own, and I came up with 2,306 acres, which seems like a huge portion of Dayton, so I went online to see how many acres there actually were in Dayton, and that amounts to like 14 and a half percent, I believe, if my math is right, of the city of Dayton that actually belongs to Three Rivers Park District, that takes off the tax rolls, that money that we're missing in perpetuity, right?
Yeah.
And it kind of bothers me. One thing that jumped out at me that I clearly wasn't aware of, and maybe you folks were, but Three Rivers, a year ago, almost a year ago now, they bought the land on the south end of French Lake that used to be Boggs's property, I guess. I wasn't even, I wasn't aware of that, so that added kind of another whack to wake me up. And I think, I think you guys are on the right path to holding their feet to the fire to make them show to you why they should be purchasing more property in Dayton, but I think we're, I think we're at the limit. I mean, Elm Creek Park is a big park, right? Three Rivers owns it. There's a fairly small portion that's in Champlin, and I think an even smaller, if I remember right, portion that's in Maple Grove, but the largest portion of it is in Dayton. And I think we really, really need to look hard before we let them purchase any more land in Dayton to lose that tax base moving forward. 14 and a half percent is a big portion of our city to have in a park. Some of Three Rivers has some pretty cool amenities for people to use, but most of that land is, it's not used. Most people don't see it. I mean, I've lived in...
Some of it can't even be used.
Yeah, right, some they won't even let you walk on. So, I mean, I've lived in Dayton most of my life, since I was a little kid, and I know what some of these areas look like, they won't let you go in there even look at them anymore. They've done some really crazy things that I've noticed. South of us, towards Maple Grove, south of our farm, there used to be a huge blue heron ruckery back there along Rush Creek, and Elm Creek came in there, or Three Rivers, or whatever you want to call it, came in there and they bulldozed the path back to the nature center, and they built all their cool little trails back there. Well, there aren't any blue herons there anymore, they chased them all away. They were literally, if you walked back there, there were thousands of them, these huge nests, the Okah Eagle nests, but they were blue herons. They're not there anymore. I watched them on Long Fernbrook Lane between Elm Creek Road and the southern edge of Dayton. I watched them put a fence up, a smooth wire fence, like a barbed wire without the barbs, just the twisted stranded wire. They put the fence up, I went, what are they fencing, you know? These people in, they're not going to keep animals in or out that way. And then a few years later, I'm driving by going to work, and they, they're taking the fence down. I thought, well, they shouldn't have never put it up in the first place. Well, the next day, when I went to work and came home, guess what? They put it back up again, they moved it into, into the park, 10 or 15 feet, and they put the thing back up. We all paid for that, right? They put it back up, but if you drive there today, there's no fence, and they took it all down again. I guess there's so many things like that that they do that just irritate the heck out of me, taking all that off our tax base and then having all of that land out there that no one can look at, no one can walk on, no one can see. So I think you guys are on the right path, keeping their feet to the fire and just not turning over any more of Dayton to them without a darn good reason.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else for open forum? Anybody in line?
Yes, so we do have someone who'd like to speak. So you should be able to state your name and address and say your concern.
My name's Eric Supplett, live at 11534 Brayburn Trail in Dayton. Can you hear me okay?
Yep. Oh, yeah.
So I just wanted to speak up tonight in regards to the recent poll that was put out for the naming of, I guess what is currently referred to as Park Service Area 21, that's been kind of constructed through the summer, and I just feel that the, the five names that were narrowed down are, could be better. Candidly, I did not submit a proposed idea. I regret that at this point. At first, I thought maybe these were the only five submissions, considering Area 21 was still considered as one of the voting options, which to me seems like a very inappropriate name that doesn't really meet any of the criteria listed as far as community relevance, creativity or originality, excuse me, nature-inspired themes or positive connotation. A couple of the other of the five include the word sunburn, and although creative play on names for sunnets in Brayburn, they certainly don't offer a positive connotation when you think of a park and relate that to sunburns. And then I think when you include the naming of, or include the farm word in Dayton Farms Park, Sunburn Farms Park, it also implies that there's maybe some sort of farming component or farm component to the theme or amenities of the park, and I think accuracy should also be what we think of when we try to name this park. So, not trying to make it an overly difficult task, but I guess I'm just proposing that the naming process or how the final naming is considered takes this into account and maybe reconsiders the proposed names that we have on the table at this point to have a better long-term name for this park that's nearby where I live. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Everybody? Okay, we'll close up in forum and move to staff consult, council updates.
Yep, good evening, mayor, members of council. Two quick updates. House Representatives, Capital Investment Committee was here today. Thank you for the mayor and for, as fashion for showing up for that, I really appreciate it. Presentation was really good, questions were really good, very, very thankful for that they were able to be on that bonding tour. We were on the Senate Bonding Tour the last couple of years, but this was the first year to be able to get the House Bonding Tour. We will call, call out Representative Du for getting us on the bonding tour, however, he was not present today, and I was very disappointed not to see him after he said he was going to be here, so I will call him on on that. Reminder that our council work session is next Tuesday for the South Water System discussion. If you have any specific questions that you have, that you want us to address or touch base on, please let myself or Jason Quisberg know, so they're able to make sure that we get anything and all things addressed right away. Again, we know this will take multiple meetings, I don't mean to be that as a threat, but that's what it's going to take, is multiple meetings to make this big of a decision, and so we don't expect a major, major answer at this meeting, but it is a good discussion to have, so.
And that meeting is open to the public?
It is open to the public, yep. So it's not a closed meeting, it will happen next Tuesday at 5 o'clock here in the council chambers, and I don't know if we'll do it as a roundtable, or if we'll do it at the dais, whatever, but it'll be basically just a discussion item. Have a small presentation, which Jason and his team is putting together, and myself and Marty will be there as well, so, thank you very much.
Are we going to, given the Met Council's response, are we going to discuss that at some point?
The A3 district, yep, so that will be, so John and I are meeting with the Met Council next week, I think that's what, Wednesday, I think is the day that we're scheduled to meet with them. We are going to make sure that all of our comments that we understand them to be, to make sure that those are addressed, and then the council will see that on November 25th at the council meeting, and that is our plan, and then hopefully be able to say, here's where we're at, here's what the idea is. We understand the general direction of what the council's at from what their approvals with A3 district were, so John and I are going to work together to make sure that we get the direction of the council while also trying to meet the recommendations and requirements from that council. So, if you have any major concerns, please let us know, and we're happy to include you on the meeting. If you want to meet with that council with us, you most certainly can. I remember the time of the meeting was 1 o'clock or something like that in the afternoon. It's a virtual meeting, so if you want to join, fantastic, but I can say that I personally know where the council's at with the A3 district and where we want to be at, I think I understand the general concept, but if I'm off, let me know, and I can touch base, so.
I have a question. In the work session for water, are we talking all things water, or are we just talking Dayton?
Just, just the South Water System for Dayton.
Do we have an update from Maple Grove?
Yes.
Okay. Will we be obviously given some information beforehand?
We will give you as much, yep, as much as information we can beforehand. I know that Jason was working out of PowerPoint, and we're trying to finish it up. I don't know if that'll come out on Monday, or if we'll, you know, walk through it on Tuesday, but we'll do our best to get it all to you as soon as we possibly can.
Okay.
It'll just be in a, it'll just be in a PowerPoint or PDF format, so it's not anything crazy or any staff reports, but...
That's perfect, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Amy?
No update.
Marty?
No update at this time.
Chief?
Mayor, members of council, Engine 21 returned today, so that's getting put back into service as we speak.
Awesome.
No update from the BD at this time.
Jason? Scott?
Oh, I should have brought this up earlier, I guess, in the consent, page seven, the minutes saved budget is set at $36,51,000. I believe that should save tax capacity.
That'd be tax capacity, yeah.
We're not matching Maple Grove yet.
I'm, are you looking to approve?
We're a little short cut.
You're looking to approve?
I like the way this, minutes read.
I will fix the minutes, thank you very much.
And then, I've already told you that I will not be here next Tuesday, so, that's all I got.
Go ahead.
I have nothing. Nothing from me.
Stephanie?
I think that, oh, graphics on the vehicle for the fire department, we have an update that they are on the vehicle?
They are on the vehicle.
So, just kind of closing the loop.
That big loop?
What'd you say?
Closing that big loop.
I, yep, wanted to close her up to know that it was done and...
Yep, done as of yesterday, and then finished up today, so.
Awesome.
Okay, so then we are on to Cross Services presentation.
Yeah, I think so.
Yep. Mayor, members of council, I'm just pulling up the PowerPoint here. Cross Services here, thank you very much.
Yeah, mayor, members of council, thank you for having us here tonight. My name is David Farron, this is Pat Schwabe. I, we're here to just share a little bit about Cross Services, so thank you for time to tell a little bit about our story. I have been aware of the organization for a number of years, but joined the board earlier this year, and it's been just a tremendously fulfilling experience, and we just wanted to share with you a little bit about our story, and then we'll talk a little bit about some potential next steps when we get to it.
Great. I am the chief of operations at Cross, and I've been there for seven years, so I'm excited to fill you in a little bit what's going on. First of all, our mission is to meet basic needs and enhance the well-being of individuals and families in our community by providing essential food services along with compassionate supportive resources. As far as history, we are 48 years old, hard to believe. We were born in 1977, and we moved out in our current warehouse where we're located in 2004, and are, most of you, are you all familiar with where we're located? Okay, great. Something that I think is really kind of amazing, this past year, we had over 20,000 visits to Cross Services. The services that we provide, we, our main service that we do is food shelf and providing food for our families that get to come two times a month, and self-shop, which is awesome, they can come and pick their own items that they want. We are a drop-in, they do not need to make appointments, and what's wonderful about that is that there's no technology barriers. So we have such a big diversity of people that we want to eliminate any barriers that we can, so we can get them in the door. Financially, we have a peace of mind program, it's our financial assistance, and so, these are people that are coming in, crisis is driving them, what's going on in their lives, right? And so, loss of job, are you sick, taking care of family members, and so, many times we might see some people then are, you know, needing to pay one month's back rent they can sustain, but because that crisis, maybe they had to do a car repair, and they're living paycheck to paycheck, and so then we're able to take care of that rent bill, so then they can get back on their feet, and they just are able to move along. We have a shop inside of our warehouse, and so people can shop there, it's very affordable. We have vouchers for those that can't right now, lots of coats and hats and mittens, hint, hint, if you have any that you want to drop by for us, they all go out for free to our families, so really grateful for that. We'll probably give away, I would say, somewhere around 1,000 coats this year, and we have wonderful people that drop off those donations, and you are so welcome to do that. We have some family programs, peaceful dreams program, and that's, we believe that every child should have a bed, and the recent statistic I heard for out, kind of in our northwest quadrant out here, one in 20 children do not have a bed. So that means they are sleeping with a sibling on the floor, on the sofa with parents, so our goal is to get them a bed to sleep in. And then we have a scholarship program, enrichment programs for kids after school, so they can be in sports and music and dance, and a big one is to get them in driver's ed, because if you can get another driver in your family, that's a potential income source. When mom and dad have the car home, then they can go out and possibly have a job. We give away backpacks in August, we collect them in November, and we gave away about 1,200 backpacks this year, and then we have a birthday on holiday shop, so we're getting geared up. In December, our families will shop for their toys for their kids, and again, we probably have about 1,200 children that we represent, that birth to 10 years old get gifts, and 11 to 18 get gift cards. Our service model, so we collect food from various different ways. We're so fortunate, we have a really robust food rescue program. We pick up from 20 different locations, and I have two 26-foot box trucks that are refrigerated and two full-time drivers that leave about a quarter to six in the morning, and they're going out to the grocery stores in our area, so we pick up from Sam's Club, Costco, Walmart, Trader Joe's, Buy or Lease, Aldi, a couple of Cubs, Targets, you kind of get the idea. So grateful for that, which brings in great food. I purchase food, so I have to fill in all the gaps, all the basics. We like to make sure we have multicultural food, and I purchase those from our food banks, Second Harvest and the Food Group, and then we appreciate all the donations, so that helps fill our shelf-stable food on our shelves, and we're just so grateful for all the drives that people have for us, and we're in big drive time right now. We have an advocacy program where we have family advocates, and so when our clients come in, they are going to meet with an advocate, learn about our program, how to get on the food program, and then what are all the non-food things that they might need supported, and what can we do for them? We believe in a dignity model, so we want them to come and self-shop for themselves and have their own grocery shopping experience, which is going to empower them to shop, and it gives them back the opportunity of choice. So they're in Cross because of different things going on, and many choices are being taken away from them, so if you can come and have a normal experience, it's kind of a decompressing thing, go shop, pick the things that you like and your family and you want to cook with, so we're very happy that we can provide that. I work with two food banks, like I said, in which to have better buying power, purchasing power, those are all those grocery stores I was talking about where we pick up, and guess what? We have two quick drips in Dayton that we pick up from, and we're so excited about the new one. Have, I don't know if you guys have stopped at the truck stop, but it's awesome. I've been there a few times and gassed up, so, so grateful for that. You guys are a big piece of that for us, and they are wonderful donors to food that we pick up. We go there every single day to both those places. Our community drives from all different types of places within the community, and we couldn't do what we, what we do without them. The need, so one in three Minnesotans are financially insecure, and so, one of the things that obviously we provide is having those household visits come out, and if they can grocery shop with us and take away a whole cart of groceries, which might be like 100 pounds, it's probably $200, $300 worth of groceries that they're saving. That money goes, stays in their account and can go out and pay their insurance bill or help pay towards their rent, things like that, so that's real value, and we want to make sure that we can provide that for our families. We have one in four that don't have stable housing, and so this past year, we served 557 families that came for some type of financial assistance last year. One in five cannot afford to buy the food that they need, and so this is the amount of food that went out to our families last year, 1,931,000 plus. It's kind of staggering, isn't it? 26% of our households with children are food insecure in Minnesota, 38% of our families that we serve are children, and then nearly 33% of Minnesotan seniors are economically insecure, and one in four individuals at Cross are seniors that were served. I don't think we're going to be able to get into this today, so, see if we can move on here. So how we're currently funded, to kind of get an idea, we, 93 cents of every dollar donated goes into our programs, and so, our community, you can see that it's a pie, and it's built of many different parts here, the biggest percentage of our funds come in through individuals, then you're going to see that's at 40%, you'll see 13% from corporations and businesses, and community organizations, grants, et cetera, events, faith communities, and other type of things. and community organizations, grants, et cetera, events, faith communities and other type of things. In-kind food donations last year, I shared that number with how much went out. We kind of averaged that a grocery bill for our families about four, four hundred and seventy-five dollars for a month. Our in-kind clothing that we received for donations and that was distributed was nineteen thousand pounds. We sell our clothing for three dollars a pound. It's cheaper than like a garage sale. All those funds go back into programming for the clients, so they benefit from it. And we have vouchers for those that aren't able to do that. Volunteers, looking for volunteers. If anybody wants to come on out or you want to do a small group activity for your team, let me know. We have some fun things you can do. But it's, last year we had thirty-seven thousand hours of volunteering. And currently, we have about two hundred and forty volunteers a week. That's what makes us hum and how we can get everything done that we have to do. The demand, everything that's going on, we are up twenty-nine percent in clients since last year. So, we're really feeling it for lots of different reasons. Economics, rise in food prices, all those things drive families to come to Cross. And we sort of see it about three, four weeks after whatever's happening out, you know, in society and economically. Those are the things that drive people that are on the bubble, drive them over, you know, that they just need a little more support and help, that they just can't quite make it. Our service area, so food, everyone from the state of Minnesota is technically welcome to come to Cross Services. I'm in compliance. That's just one of my titles that I hold at Cross to make sure that we are operating properly, that we, the way that we need to. And so, we are open to anyone who can come for food is fine. We had ninety-two cities represented out of the state that people came to us. Non-food services, those are reserved for our six local cities. As you can see, Champlin, Corcoran, Dayton, Maple Grove, Acion Rogers. And those are going to be all of our financial assistant programs and the things I had kind of described before for you. Chad Lanners is our executive director and he had another commitment tonight, so he sent me. And anyway, I think a lot of you know Chad. He's amazing, a lot of energy, fun to work with. And I, so if you're interested to want to come on out for a tour, Chad and I would love to take you for a tour. Come on out and actually see our facility and what we're doing. It's, it's, it's pretty awesome. And if you want to host a drive, let me know. I shared a little bit about volunteering. We have a few different volunteer opportunities for groups or individuals and you can talk to Tracy. Other than that, thank you for letting us present tonight.
Yeah, again, we think, we appreciate the time to be here. A lot of what we're trying to do is just continue to raise awareness on multiple fronts. So, I think what we find is both, just a lot of everyday citizens in the communities that we serve really aren't aware of the services that are available to them. And so, that, we want to make sure that that is, is out there and understood. And then secondarily, looking to, we'd love to have you guys just come see the scale of the operation if you've never been. It's really something to see. I think it's pretty powerful to see in action. And then also, you know, as we think about how that evolves, just helping to be an advocate, again, just on the awareness front outside of the individuals, but to your local, just any community organizations, businesses. And we run off of fundraising and then very importantly that Pat articulated, volunteers are what really makes kind of the operation go. And so, that's what we just, we love your partnership on over time, so.
I have a question, actually.
Go ahead. Yeah.
How would we connect residents to you guys? So, do they, something online? Do they just come in? I know you said there weren't, there wasn't that barrier. Someone's wondering, requirements? And how would we connect our residents or how would they get their, your services?
I brought some of the cards for you that I did some leave behind, so I'll grab those out for you. Our website, of course, and they can just drop in. So, it's basically come during our hours and it's nine to two, Monday through Friday and Thursday until seven. Those are our client hours. So, they can just drop in. We'll take it from there. They can meet with an advocate. They can find out all our services, how we can help them. And they will not be turned away for food.
Thank you so much.
Maybe tangibly like on your website or in any like city publications or things, just if there's ways to...
Link them to us?
Yep.
That would be great.
Is that something we could put?
Get some cards out.
Yes and no.
It's clunky.
It's clunky?
Yeah.
I figured there was some sort of like barrier.
Not because we don't appreciate Cross Services. It's just because it has to be all or nothing.
Right.
So, it's got to be, how do we get?
Ask us around, make sure.
And how do we figure out where it's the cutoff or who we should be?
Right.
No advertising for it.
We do like for the holiday and we're doing a food drive as part of that and that is for Cross.
Okay.
It's for Cross. Yeah, so we do things on behalf for Cross, like we'll do, I think we do the co-drive too as well. Is that what that's part of it as well?
I think that is for the PD.
Is that, well, I think that's for the PD. Is that something else? I don't know if that's...
Uh, I think it's separate than the co-drive.
That's not Cross?
No, it's a competition between different PDs.
I'm just thinking that, you know, like you had highlighted, a lot of these kinds of services people are in need of, especially right now. And you don't know it's an option unless you know it's an option. And so, just making sure that we're connecting the residents that we can, apologies. So, I appreciate the cards and thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question too. Sorry. When I first saw your location, I wasn't sure, is there, do you have to, is there a religious requirement?
No.
Okay, because that was one thing that I wasn't certain of. And so, I think there might be some residents who are also not certain if they have to be. And our LGBTQ families welcome.
Absolutely.
Because they are not welcome everywhere, so. Thank you.
Everyone is welcome.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back to item J.
You want me to go first?
It doesn't matter. I just have a general statement, so if you want to go first, you definitely can.
Well, I have a general statement. I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion right away. Basically, this is where I'm at. I want to make the motion that we do not accept this resignation and allow this individual to extend a medical leave of ninety days. I can say more, but I won't for now.
Yeah, this, this is frustrating because we have nothing. And the resignation letter was a half-sentence text. And I'd certainly like to know a lot more, but I don't know how we do this.
Can I maybe make my statement and then we can move forward?
Be careful what you say.
I agree and I'm probably pervy to more information, but that's okay. I just want to express my concerns, especially with this situation. And I'm trying very carefully to not out anyone, although I have permission to say what I need to say. But I think that personally, I am not in the position to accept a forced resignation from this department or any department. This individual does not wish to resign. I also think that this particular situation warrants more investigation into how we got to this point. And I think that, you know, again, this sets a precedent for our culture as a city and as a department as far as firefighters feeling safe to seek help when they need it. And I think that we, I want to say, oh, but that's the only word that comes to my mind. We owe it to this individual to do our due diligence and make sure that the way that this was handled is in alignment with, you know, the state statutes in alignment with, you know, there's nothing, that was nefarious. I'm trying again to not out any individual, but I guess I'll just say that when a firefighter seeks help after different, like difficult calls and is cleared for duty by their treating physician and we decide that we don't believe that that's true, I think we owe it to them to investigate fully into how it was handled and what exactly was done. And telling them to resign or we will terminate you should not be the answer. And I don't think that giving a three-month leave is adequate time to assess somebody's ability to come back and perform their duties. And so, I would also be in alignment with extending a leave that was denied while this individual continues the work that they've been doing, as well as an investigation not done by us, maybe by our HR firm that we pay for, into how we as a city handled the situation and what liability we have placed on the city by what we've already, the process we've already done, I guess. That's very vague and I apologize, but again, I'm not trying to out anybody. But I think it sets a precedent for where we stand on mental health in general, especially within the fire service. So, I guess that's my two cents.
I guess I struggle with the whole thing because, you know, we're in a, in a public meeting and I think we're walking a
Gage shells.
Really difficult line for HIPAA violations. We're talking about somebody's medical history and treatment and I'm really uncomfortable having that in an open session. I don't know if that can be a closed session because there's, seems to be such limited opportunity to, for that somehow. Seems absurd to me that this has to be out, out in public. And, you know, this certainly, in my view, also warrants more information because what we had in the packet isn't, isn't much to go on. So, I guess that's my two cents on it.
I will clarify, I had permission to share everything that I did beforehand. And Scott's here tonight, so he can attest to that. So...
Well, and the problem is a few of us are, you know, clearly in the dark. I, I just seen the text and I knew there was more to the story. Or had to be more to the story, so I, I, it's just... All right, so you had a motion to...
Not accept the resignation and give this gentleman at least a ninety-day extension.
What is the path forward? Because allowing a ninety-day extension, while I agree with you that this individual should be afforded that, especially with the severity of what we're talking about, I'm not sure that I agree that there is a, a path forward where we aren't exactly in this spot again in three months. So, like what is the, what is the path forward? What is the three months for? And at the end of it, are we in the same spot we are and we're just prolonging an inevitable end? I guess is my question.
Well...
And I don't know that you have a definite answer to that, so I don't...
It depends on how deep into this conversation we, we want to go because I do know a few things. I did do a little, little bit of research on this. I guess to me, whether or not, I, I do not know what's in any reports a hundred percent. I do have one report that was given me by this individual. I've also sat down and talked with this individual. And the reason that he is not, or that this is coming up is one counselor gave, or one counselor gave a ability or a...
Careful what you're about to say, Zach, or Scott. Because again...
I think what you're hinting at is the process that was taken and why did we...
I'm not sure of that. I don't know what process it normally would go through.
Well, I think that's why HR should be the one to handle these issues and to make sure that we did follow the correct process. Because I have legitimate concerns that we may, we may have followed a process we thought or believed was the best forward, but I don't know that, I don't know that it's in alignment with disability protections, et cetera. Like I don't know that we are not, not at fault. Does that make sense? And I don't want to say too much, but I feel like it warrants, look into the process that we followed. What is the next step? What can we do? And maybe that is a three-month extension to figure that out and to figure out what the next steps are. Right?
Well, I think what you're talking, you're talking two different things here than you, you're talking two, two things. I want to deal with extending this individual first. And I don't have a problem if we dig into what happened and, and where we should go forward. I don't have a problem with that.
I just think that gives a clear path forward as far as if there's no, if there's no path that we're going down, the three months doesn't mean anything. Do you know what I mean? So, like if you don't have a roadmap for that three months, we're just delaying three months and we're going to be sitting right back in this spot. If the intention isn't to figure out...
Maybe yes or no.
I would, I would hope not.
I don't know how we figure that out here. I think we, we just basically have to think, act on what, what's in front of us. And...
So, we deny it and then we grant the extension. He was not afforded. That's what I'm getting. And then we can handle the other stuff while that extension has happened. Right?
Well, number one, I don't know that he was denied an extension. I don't know that answer.
The email from Zach that I get, was provided, said that they would not be giving an, an extension further. Resign or we will terminate you. So, I think that we as a council need to say that we are okay with the extension because the policy says three consecutive months or three months out of the calendar year. So, if we don't say, yes, we're granting a three-month extension to that, it doesn't have to be given, I guess. Are we directing them to give a three months instead of the resignation?
I do, I do want to clarify one comment that I had in my email, just to make sure that it's clear what my email said. It says, "The fire department allows up to ninety days of unpaid leave. You've been out on unpaid leave since July of twenty twenty-five. The city extended the leave to allow time to complete the fitness for duty test, or fitness for duty assessment. As you're able to return to active duty at this time, we elected, you know, you can elect to resign from your employment or we can move forward with formal termination of your employment."
So, if we don't accept this resignation, assuming the implication is he stays as part of the paid-on call, but is he stay on leave?
That is something that I have to work with ABDO and HR on. So, I will say that I did work with ABDO and HR on that email and everything, part of this process that I got brought into. I was not, not at the beginning, so I will say that the beginning process was not handled by ABDO, but this part was with myself. And we, by doing a resignation, all of the information is not given to council, which is maybe where we're at. If it was a termination item, then we'd be able to share more information to council for that action item. I don't know if that's the best item for that employee or that person. That would be up to them and I, I don't know. That's, again, that's what they're, that's up to them and the individual city in the room, if he wants to have all that out there. I don't know. We acted, I acted on the behalf of the city that was trying to be best for both the employee and the city itself. But if the council doesn't want to accept it, part of the personal policy and Councilor Slade stopped in my office today to see what else we could do. And part of the personal policy is to extend ninety days for a medical leave, which council can do. I cannot do that. That has to be a council action.
Well, we can do it.
The council can do that based on a medical leave, so.
I could, I could have told you that.
So, Councilor Slade stopped in to ask what we could do and I don't also want to say that, I don't think Councilor Henderson's comments aren't real either, that we could be in the same situation in ninety days as well. And I, I want to make sure that's clear too and I don't know. I don't want to paint, false picture that we're going to be in a different spot.
Hopefully, we're in a different spot and we have more...
But I just want to make sure that's clear, that we may be on the same spot and I know. This is a touchy subject to talk about in a public meeting, so.
Yeah.
It's very hard.
We've had a few of these and it just is horrid, so.
So, the, the motion on the table is what, Scott?
To not accept the resignation and give him another ninety-day leave.
And how will we address, will address the process? Because I think it's, we're in uncharted waters.
We have, yeah, so myself and HR will be handling the issue if the ninety days are extended. It'll be HR and myself and obviously Amy, because she's HR, so. ABDO will be spearheading the process, because we are in uncharted waters as well. It'll be, as, as employment, we, I've never had to handle this issue, so that's an HR thing. thing, and that's why we have an HR firm to do that, so.
Is you concerned the process that occurred or is going to occur?
Both.
Yeah.
I'm concerned about both processes.
I don't know how we, I would like to find out a lot more about what we're really talking about, and I don't know how we do this.
In the end, there's a, a test for your ability to come back.
Fit for
Yeah, fit for duty assessment.
Yes.
Yep.
Right, but I have concerns about the nature of how we mandated that, decided on that, and forced that, as well as
How does something like that get resolved? Would, would individual councilmembers talk to the HR group, or how do we, how do we?
I don't, Mayor, Mayor and Councilmembers, I don't know the answer, because that's, this is why it's very
Yes.
Touchy. I would say that that would probably be the first step, and I'm going to, I will, if this is the discussion item, that's toward the direction, I'm going to have to follow up with HR tomorrow and/or Monday, figure out what our next steps are, because I want to make sure that I'm following the process, too, because that's why we have an HR firm, and that's what I'm used to.
So what happens if, if we don't go farther with Scott's motion, and I'm not saying where we should go with that yet, I'm just curious, though, if, if this item is tabled, then what is the, what happens with the employee?
We would have to grant an extension no matter what, right?
Yeah, you'd have to grant an extension, because, so that, as a city administrator, I can grant X number of days, which is 30 days. That's what I can grant it as an extension of leave without going over my authority. 90 days is what the council can do, up to a year of 90-day extensions. So, so including all of the leave, you know, if that makes sense. But after that, we need to make a decision. So that's based on the personnel policy.
So you're asking if it's possible that
You table
If simply, if, let's just say it was accepted, doesn't mean that they can never be employed again, right?
No, I understand that part.
So same thing with the extension. It can get extended again, and it can be looked at in 90 more days.
I'm just, well, clearly, there are wide variations in understanding of this situation across this table, right? Some people know a lot about it. I know what was in the packet essentially, and, you know, what little I hear on the street. So it's really hard to make an informed decision on, on what's in, in front of us, and that doesn't make me very comfortable.
And in this situation, I don't think unless you have knowledge of the individual or that conversation, we legally can't share with you what that information is.
Yeah, understood. I'm quite familiar with how HIPAA works and how you get on the wrong side of that. It just, you know, we're in this weird void when we're asked to accept something, and especially the way it's written, it's like, how can you not say, well, what's, what's this all about? And the answer is, well, you don't get to know, but you still have to decide.
You mean, when you just said that, were you referring to HIPAA or were you referring to a disciplinary?
Yep, to HIPAA.
Okay.
So there's a professional that did an evaluation that you won't ever get to see. That's not anybody's information to have. So you're either trusting a professional to do their job, or you're not.
Which professional, the first one or the second one? Because we didn't trust the first one, and we mandated a second one.
I only know of the one.
There's two.
All right.
I just, it's, it's messy, and I just don't feel like we've done our due diligence. That's my thing.
So, yeah, the council would like to, if, I want to address Councilor Fashion's point of the, what if we don't, what if we just table it? We would have to have some sort of extension of the leave. I think that's what we, I, as staff, I prefer that, because that gives me at least direction that we're following the personal policy as best we possibly can, knowing that this situation is already sticky enough. I'm trying to follow policies as best as I possibly can, so.
Why don't you less sticky, not more sticky?
I'm, I'm trying my best.
This is always good.
Trying my best.
So I'll second Scott's motion.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. Not curious, five to zero.
On to less sticky things.
Okay. Item K.
So this is a public hearing.
Yep.
We have approval of Resolution 76. This is the transferring of the local board authority and appeals of equalization, power, and duty to Hennepin County. Go to that open book like we've talked about previously. So it's kind of to be more transparent, give residents more time, and not have the false hope of coming here, having a change, and then having to go to Hennepin County and having it reversed anyway.
Yep.
Because they don't care what we say.
Because they don't.
I do want the council to know that Maple Grove switched open book this year, and they've been local bars for
Which is actually surprising.
Which was very surprising to us, that they switched
Because they have a whole separate board of specialized
That's correct, so.
And they, I'm guessing the county also didn't listen to them either, which is why they were like, this is a waste of everyone's time.
Possibly, I don't know.
Any questions for staff?
So it is a public hearing.
Yep. Open the public hearing. Is anybody here to speak to this issue? Anybody online? All right.
Yes.
Not because I know anything about this, it's because we don't know anything about this.
Name and address.
Keith Rover.
Try to speak in the mics. Speak in the mic, thank you.
So that we're knowledgeable enough on the subject to know whether we should be speaking up or not, can you be in a little more, give us in a little more detail of what's going on? Now, what I've just picked up by reading the, the packet and, and listening to you folks just for a few minutes here tonight, is that the board that folks hear from the city, that people would come to, that would complain about their
Valuation.
Valuation of their property.
Their classification, yeah.
You guys have made a decision on some folks, and the county has overturned that decision? Do they do it all the time, part of the time?
They have one parcel, they did multiple, didn't they? With that guy's small farm?
Yeah. You know, for the most part, the disputes that we see already get handled by the counties, and, and I think almost every one we've looked at was actually decided in the property owner's favor. It's just, there's been at least, yeah, a classification that they ruled this on, and I think there was
There was one valuation, I believe.
There was one valuation that, that was the last, just this last year, wasn't it? And that was just so blatantly wrong, but anyways, yeah, so that's the deal.
Okay, so the, the procedure then would be, we wouldn't do it here anymore.
Correct.
Where would people have to go in order to conduct
Yep, so on residence tax statement, it will say that we're now in open book, and that you'll go to Hennepin County. It will say the date, it will say the phone number that you call. They, you would still reach out to the assessing office and hopefully resolve it before that open book, and then you don't necessarily have to be in person, because they can read it in. So if you worked it out with the assessing office first, then they read it into the meeting, so you don't necessarily have to drive to wherever they hold that meeting.
And you get more time, too, correct?
You do get more time, yes.
There's less time when you do it our way.
I, I would, just my opinion, I've never gone through this before, probably should have a few times, but I just haven't. I would think that you're going to get a whole lot fewer people questioning that if they have to go to Hennepin County rather than talking to you folks here in the city first. And I would say, that's why I was just curious as to what percentage of, of items that you folks decided on that they actually overturned down there. Are we just beating people to the wolves, or, or telling people that, you know, if they're intimidated about Hennepin County courthouse?
I don't think
They don't go to the courthouse.
Well, they go to Hennepin County.
No, I don't.
It's got to be Hennepin County office.
The first step still, currently and in the future, would be to work with the assessor. And most of what we see, the, the assessors come forward with their book of properties and say, and read the addresses into the record and so on, and say, they've come to an agreement with the property owner, and this is what it is. And so it's, there's no action taken by us except to accept it, right? And then there's a couple every year where there's a, you know, a, a different kind of dispute that they haven't been able to resolve, and then we make a, a determination on it. But then it goes to the county, so it's more like our work is a recommendation, which we did not understand in the past, and the county is free to do whatever they want with it. And so we feel like we're giving people a false sense of hope when we say, that makes sense to us, we'll, we'll change it, we'll overrule it, whatever, and then they go on to the next step, and it just gets tossed out. So it'd be more efficient.
Many people that came here anyways to, to get us to overrule. It was, I mean, over the years, it's been a, a few, but I don't know that we, we overrule many, but the ones we have, I don't know what a percentage they tossed, so.
All right, thanks for the information.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public meeting on this. I need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
On the, at the end of the resolution, it, it says that, you know, therefore be it resolved that the Dayton City Council hereby transfers its authority to Hennepin County Board indefinitely as provided for in Minnesota statute, something, something, something. Indefinitely, does that mean we don't get to revisit this in the future?
Indefinitely just means until you want to revisit it. It's a, it would be a simple reverse resolution, and you could go back to
Yeah, indefinitely does, means that we won't have to approve this every year, essentially, because otherwise we'd have to approve it every single
Or you'd have to pick a timeframe and then make sure that it's revisited, and then
Yeah.
So it's not indefinitely, like it can't be reversed back if that was the desire of the council?
Yeah, I'm, I was just reading it as meaning more like permanent, and
Got it, nope.
You know, things change, so
Yep.
It may be something we would want to revisit
No, I just wasn't putting a timeframe on it for it to be ineffective.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Carrie is five to zero, and we're on to item L.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, you're asked to engage in a discussion regarding an interim use permit for a home extended business at 13401 Zanzibar Lane North, approved in 2023. So, subject to the conditions listed in Resolution 28-2023, which was also in your packet, staff has conducted annual inspections over the last two years as required per the interim use permit approval, and has not found the property to be in complete compliance with all of the conditions of approval to this point. Follow-up inspections have occurred, and it, city staff has been working with the applicants to bring the property to compliance. Just to highlight a couple of the items that were in the staff report, nuisance issues this property is subject to the nuisance code within the prop, within the city code. There has been routinely accumulations of junk on the property, or what is classified as junk per the city code definition, whether that is associated with the business area or out in the residential portion of this property. This has been an ongoing issue, and the applicants have stated that they are working on resolving this issue. There's also been some identified construction activity going on, on site, so that is to answer to some of the issues regarding nuisances as well. Staff has also found that there have been business activities operating within these storage units, and staff has identified those areas. Since then, the applicants have removed those tenants from the property. However, there is potentially still one operating there, a landscape company in one of the units, though to this point, I have not had any physical evidence captured regarding that, just knowing that there has been utilization of space on this property for a business to come, get, grab its items, potentially employees are parking on site, and then heading off to a job site, and then at the end of the day, coming back and dropping the things off and leaving. And the other thing that had been ongoing is related to the commercial vehicles. From my understanding, this was approved prior to myself being in this position, and looking back at the minutes of that discussion at the planning commission level, there was a question raised of whether this needs to be a part of a condition of approval to not allow commercial trucks or vehicles to be stored on the property. The planning commission came to a consensus that while this is in our city code, that Zanzibar is not utilized for commercial traffic, so there's no need to be, as a condition of approval, yet in your packets, you can see within the photos, there has been a, a storage of commercial vehicles on the site as well. So those are, those are things that are ongoing. I will say that two weeks ago, on October 31st, I did follow up with the property owners and walked the site, and I shared pictures or photos of the existing conditions today, and tried to highlight some of those areas that I had mentioned regarding the commercial or the construction activity, excuse me. Also, within your packets, you, there was kind of a timeline related to when the previous owner had owned this property and utilized the space for storage of trailers, vehicles, whatever it may have been at that time, as well as kind of a timeline for the aerials that show when the property ownership changed. A date, which is the 2023, was the, essentially taken two weeks prior to them coming to the planning commission for a public hearing to request this interim use permit, and then 2024 was a year after that, that had lapsed, and the site is shown up there. So staff did, I believe that a month ago, I provided an update to you in a, a weekend, or a weekly update regarding the ongoing working on this property, and staff, under the direction of the city council, was requested to put this presentation together, ask the property owners to come in and discuss the existing business that is occurring on the site. They're here to answer any questions that you may have, and hoping to get a little bit of an understanding of what to expect moving forward from both the city council and the property owners. So with that, I'm happy to answer any initial questions, and as I mentioned, the applicants are, and the property owners are here currently, so.
Anybody have any questions for staff?
Do you know about how much time all this has taken?
So I, I first went out there, I believe, in September of 2024, and I'd say that I've done six, off the top of my head, it's probably seven inspections related to just follow-up or if there's any time that I get an inquiry from someone driving by or whatever, asking questions or raising a concern, I'll also go out there as well. I'll say that it doesn't take me too, too much time to go out there and do a walk around or meet with the property owners. It might be a half hour to an hour at most, but those would be the, the times. And I will say, too, that the latitude that, that staff has worked with the property owner, of those six or seven inspections that I've done, I would say four of them would have been routine, like standard operations for city staff to go out there and conduct. So I'd say that there's roughly three additional inspections that occurred, but, yeah, that, to answer your question, yeah.
There has been fire inspections as well. I don't know if
Correct.
The chief has numbers on how many times the assistant chief or the chiefs have been out there, but I know there's been a multiple of fire inspections as well done at the same time or whatever.
Mayor, members of council, yeah, that's accurate. We've been out, Chief Astrop's been out a few times in conjunction with community development with John and Hayden, and that property owner has been responsive in that capacity in making those changes for us. I, I have recently, for what it's worth, is I did issue a $500 fine for burning complaint. They were issued a burn permit, went, went out, they did not burn the pile that they said they were going to burn. According to the burn permit, burn permit was taken away, and pictures were taken of the stuff that was burned, so there's a bunch of inappropriate material in that burn pile.
When was that, Carrie? Do you remember, like a month, like how long ago was that? I'm just trying to get a timeline.
Yep, I, so this is the second fine that I've issued to the property, issued Yep, I, so this is the second fine that I've issued to the property, issued a $100 fine, I think, a couple of years ago, if I recall. And I worked with Zach on this, on this time. This is, in the last month or so, 45 days, this recently.
So recently?
Yes.
Chief Hendrickson, could you just clarify with me? In terms of Assistant Chief Astrop attending the site and doing an inspection on the buildings, letters were also issued in that regard and follow-up inspections were carried out to verify that those fire safety hazards were resolved within the buildings themselves.
That is correct, yep.
Any more questions for staff?
Not for staff, no.
Okay, you come forward. Name and address?
Greg Hyden.
Greg Hyden, yeah.
Where do you live?
Where do you live, yeah? Oh, we live at 10100 Hillside Lane West in Minnetaka.
So first and foremost, I thought home extended businesses were for people who lived at the home and that's what made it a home extended business? Is that?
Yeah, that is our, along, the business is also owned with us, our son Noah, and he lives at the property.
He does, he doesn't live in Texas?
No, he doesn't live in Texas, he lives at the property.
Okay.
And I just have to ask, I, I don't know what you're talking about, about the most recent.
Oh, I do.
Oh, you do?
But we didn't get a.
I didn't get anything from you.
We sent the notification to the property address.
Oh, got it, okay. Because it's supposed to be a home extended business, you're supposed to live there, so that's why, yeah.
I think that came up originally, that's your son?
Yeah.
And he lives there.
Yeah. He's a driver's license, mares, axes, et cetera.
Okay, so you're on a path to cleaning this up and it sounds like staff has, these seem a path forward.
Yeah, we're obviously interested in complying with whatever needs to be done to move forward. With the least amount of incurrence on city time as possible.
So I know one time, because there are not supposed to be commercial vehicles there and they're, they're all the time. For the record, I live kitty corner from you, so I see them all the time. At least once, right before an inspection, the semis were moved into the woods so that they were not visible. The inspection by the city happened and they were moved back out into the property after the inspection was done, so.
Exactly like that, but there was, there was several that were moved into, just because they were lacking pledges to move them, so we were under pressure just to get rid of them, get them out, whatever. And as you can, well, you can see that picture, like any, everything that he has stated so far, we went, we even went one step further, which you wouldn't even know about, particularly with the fire department, when they came and inspected, they suggested, they suggested that we would fire extinguishers everywhere. There wasn't a requirement and I'm like, well, maybe I should just do it, just to get, amp it up a little bit, get everybody more comfortable. So we did that, that's why they've had multiple inspections for fire extinguishers and just inspecting the units in general. Any of the large semis, of which we're, there are, we were, we were okayed for semi-trailers.
What do you mean you were okayed for semi-trailers? There's not supposed to be commercial traffic on Zanzibar?
We, our original IUP allowed for us to have four trailers that were originally there. They were just the trailers, not the semis.
Right.
Because they were originally on the property, they did not require a commercial vehicle to take them on and off, so they were okay, those four trailers. Then they're no longer there.
And what, what, we were finding because, well, my cameras weren't working apparently as much as they should, like the red truck in there, everything that is, so even if there was a suggestion of the IUP, like, okay, let's just get rid of everything that's even possibly anything, exactly what you're saying. So we got rid of all of it, so there aren't any, there's no semi-trailers there at all anymore, there's nothing. So we got rid of everything that we thought or the IUP is stating is we just got rid of everything. It was just, it was easier to, to do that than make a problem out of it. There's a few things that got, got pushed in, there's a, I think you just had this in one of your other city, your meetings, there's, that's not a trailer, it is a, what's that called, a storage box or whatever?
Yeah.
That's still there, I think that kind of got grandfathered in. I don't remember what else, but I mean, everything else that is.
You still have, do you still have a tenant that's problematic?
No, we actually just got rid of the last one.
You did, okay.
Yeah, we have some problematic people and we did.
Why were there people there at all, though? You were never allowed to have businesses run out of here?
No.
If you understand how to get rid of someone, a tenant that's problematic.
Well, I guess, I guess my question is why were they there in the first place?
Because.
We rented storage space to people.
Right, and they, and they told us they wanted to do stuff and they started doing it, so.
And then they come in and then they start doing something that we didn't allow them to do and then we say, no, you're not allowed out and then they don't comply and it takes a while to get them out.
My understanding was your IUP was to allow, like, storage of recreational vehicles?
It was allowed to allow storage. Storage, and we did make some leases for the interior spaces for people to store things.
And is that allowed in our extended home business? I don't recall that being one of the options.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'll just clarify that it was permitted for indoor and outdoor cold storage. Essentially, I think the intent of the planning commission, the city council at the time, was to have this type of home extended business reflect what would you, what you would normally see at a, at a U-Haul storage facility.
I was on the planning commission and that was not our intent. It was for the storage of recreational vehicles. That was, that was the intent, that was always the intent from the planning commission. I wasn't on the council at the time it was approved. Because that was the business that was operating out of there prior to your taking on ownership of this land, they stored recreational vehicles. Traffic upped a little bit in fall and there was a little bit more traffic in spring and that was it. And it was always neat and tidy and clean and there were never semis and there were never commercial vehicles and there were not businesses running out of there. It was the storage of boats and trailers, that was it. Came in in fall, left in spring and that was what was approved at planning commission at the time. Because I was part of that conversation about, should we explicitly say no commercial traffic? And we said, well, we can't have commercial traffic on Zanzibar, so we shouldn't have to add an extra thing when it's already not allowed. And then here we are. And once again, you guys are here, not your son, who's the one who lives there, so it doesn't seem like it's his business, it seems like it's your business and you don't live there.
We are the managers of this.
But you don't live there and so it's not an extended home business?
And he is the owner of the business, this one.
Oh, okay.
A really, a really good point here too, is you're making a blanket statement like you know all about the properties for any length of time, which apparently you don't, because I literally have been one of the main people, that's how I met the owner and that's how I bought the properties, because I knew the owner from me renting my position, my spot in the property with my construction equipment, my skid loaders, my trucks.
All of which was illegal and he didn't have the right to do that.
But, okay, so you're wrong, so.
Did he have an IUP for that?
No, he didn't have anything. He didn't have an IUP for anything he did.
Yeah, so he shouldn't have been doing it.
But when I took, when I took over the property and I called the city, I always called the city first and all those guys just ran and leave does stuff and hope for the best and ask for forgiveness later, don't do that, I know it's a waste of time. So when I bought the property, I called the city, I made several requests, what can I do, what can I do for a fence, what can I do for this, what can I do for that? They actually approved me for a 250-foot-long, 70-foot-wide building in the back of the property. So if I would have went through with that, you guys would have sucked with that big, that huge building in the back of the property, which I could have done because you, everyone approved it. And the person that I talked to on the phone, it's like, yeah, no problem. Like, oh, okay, sweet, that's, that's great, I love it, I love it. Eh, eh, like Dayton itself, we plan on moving here and, you know, fully within six months to a year. And the openness of the community was, was why I liked it. Saying the pledge of allegiance when you, you know, you come in and have a meeting, awesome. I don't, I don't even remember the last time I said the pledge of allegiance, great. So I think when we, I don't know, it just, it just seems like there's a lot of, there's a lot of mixing up, there's not a lot of, it seems like there's a lot of turnover in your, in your group and the, and the council and everything else, I totally get that, you guys, you know, you ever, I think it's a really hard job personally, especially with the last one.
I guess so you understand that the hair trigger that we're at.
Yeah, absolutely.
As long as, yeah, and I don't know.
I have a question before we move forward, just, because again, this is my first kind of rodeo through this, so please bear with me. The business itself is storage, right? But each outbuilding is its own piece of the, so you're leasing the building to someone to store their things or someone else's things?
Yeah, the, the buildings are, the buildings are divided into separate units.
Like bays, kind of?
Zach's been out there, yeah. They each have a door, we have separate leases with the people in them for storage. They, they are storage leases, like mini, you know, like mini.
You can store whatever you want in there or is it just?
Yeah, they're limited.
Okay, just asking, I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, I mean, our lease clearly states it can't be pollution or whatever, they are not allowed to work on vehicles in there. All the things that are in our IUP are in their lease. We've shared the lease, we shared every lease with Tori, who was here before, that was part of our deal as setting this up. We shared all the leases of all the people, they were approved that we had with everyone. They approved all those leases, it was, everyone was okayed. We have had some turnover, we have had a few problem people, yes, admittedly, they've been problems for us, big problems. We've gotten rid of them, we're being much more diligent. We have had some problems with nuisance, nuisance rubbish on the property, yes, we have. We also have a construction business and admittedly, we have used Noah's house there to use some of our construction stuff, busy season, we're piling it there, we're going to cease doing that, we won't do that. It's been an eyesore for the community, we understand. Moving forward, not going to do that anymore. We've cleaned it up, we're going to continue to clean it up and get it nicer. I think Hayden has seen a lot of what we did the last time we were there, we're going to continue to clean it up and moving forward, we're really, really planning on making it much nicer. We just improved the fence last week, we're going to be putting in asphalt and we are in the middle of a demolition project right now, which I know he's got some pictures of, but we do have intentions of really making improvements and making it all much nicer. I know it's been a big eyesore and that's not the way we want it.
You know where I live, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will be calling every single time I see a violation.
It's okay.
To this point, I haven't, I just, I'm mad, but now I will be calling.
Yeah, I guess my only comment around it is I think you need to be real clear on the situation you're in at this point. This, this, we won't be having a discussion next time. I think that the business you've been running is not the business that you were approved to run and you're making steps to clean that up, but it has to stay clean. It can't be for a week or three months. If we're back here again, it's to pull your permit.
That's where I would have went with it, I mean, no. I'm willing to put a timeframe on it now, unfortunately, we should have done this six months ago because then your timeframe would have expired here as soon as we get cold. So I'm not sure how we do this timeframe thing. There's no, to me, there's no way you're going to get this cleaned up unless you bring in extra help to get it done.
Which part do you want cleaned up? Because what you're seeing in pictures, I think, has been cleaned up.
Yeah, this is past.
These are not, that is not a current picture.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, if I could just clarify that discrepancy, this aerial photo is from the end of August of 2025. Those photos that are in your packet as a part of this agenda item are from October 31st, 2025, so those are, that's the discrepancy, that is the most recent aerial photo that we have on this site. But those October 31st photos within there reflect a different scene. There are still minor compliance issues that I've noted within that packet as well. And then I'll just say as well, for the interim use permit revocation, typically, once they are found out of compliance, they are issuing basically a 60-day notice to bring that into compliance. So if there is any, any struggle with understanding what a practical timeline would be, just for reference, that is what is within that ordinance, so.
Okay, so there you got it, you got 60 days.
What sort of, do you feel that there's now a compliance currently?
Yeah, and I'll follow up with that, there are, there are things that I've mentioned over emails as well that are still ongoing and I'll follow up with an email again with this and, but essentially, the limitations are the conditions of approval within that resolution that I provided. So those are the things that would continuously need to be maintained compliance with throughout the year, so that, that, which is, which is that list and we could certainly follow up again with that, with that kind of list of what is current. Because I'm sure that things have changed since October 31st, as you guys had mentioned, continue to do work out there, so things are constantly changing, so.
Yeah, we have, I mean, we still haven't got rid of the concrete from the silo that we.
That's part of the demolition.
Part of the demolitions, we do have a permit for that. There's going to be more demolition, the other silos still going to be removed, we're going to have, you know, pile of concrete or something, which I don't know how that falls into anything, but as far as like the general tidiness of the area, you can currently, you can go there now if you'd like, there, there's nothing, it doesn't look like that anymore.
So when you see the commercial vehicles coming and going, we do have a demolition, I mean, we have demolition permit for taking those silos down and we've got trucks coming in and out to take that concrete out of there and to move that stuff and an excavator and, I mean, you've got a permit for stuff that's going on that has, that's separate from our interim use permit, so.
Is that a permit that comes from us?
It's an administrative permit issued by Metro West and as I, as I've mentioned, there are, there is construction activity currently going on onsite. If you have any specific questions, you can feel free to call me and we can walk through that. And I'll also say too, that the last, the last walk around that I did, and I believe it was July or August, was when I had found continued things out of compliance and that was when I had mentioned to Greg, who was there at the time, that ultimately, this is where it was going to end up, that we were going to have this conversation. And then I went back out there and, on Halloween and it was substantially different. So those, it's that, those types of, those types of conversations and, you know, going through the process and letting them know that it was going to come to this point, that potentially provoked them to make more improvements at that point, so that's just some context.
Hayden, I have one more question and it's, yeah, kind of a yes or a no, so I'm starting to pigeonhole you. Have you gone out there for an inspection at any point and the property was completely within compliance, there was no issues?
Of all the 20 items within the resolution, I can't say that there was 100% compliance. Now, if there was minor nuisance related to junk within the yard or something like that, it was made as a comment towards that and I would say that there were two occasions that I felt that there was substantial compliance with that, but to say that it was 100% clear and cut compliance, I, I don't think that I could say that at this point.
What about the floodplain issues and storage in the floodplain?
So that is a little bit difficult to monitor as things move day to day, if they do within that site. There's a clear understanding with the property owners that essentially what we had limited it to was if there were campers, trailers, like maybe a farm trailer or something like that, those types, I would say that a boat was within that category as well, were those types of things that in conversations with the DNR, when this interim use permit was approved, were classified as not injurious to the floodplain area. Now, with that being said, there have been times within this, these inspections, that there have been vehicles placed back there that would have essentially triggered that issue with compliance for the floodplain. This is a tricky area with the floodplain because there was a waterway that was installed at some point within this time and Jason could clarify if I'm wrong at any point. Things had changed regarding the floodplain area, the actual area, however, it has not been officially delineated on the site. So the information that we have to go off of is that information from previous that is actually more disruptive or disturbing to the property itself than what is likely actually out there, but without doing that delineation, we cannot make assumptions on but without doing that delineation, we cannot make assumptions on where the actual floodplain area is, and we have to go off of what the existing information we have.
One of the conditions of the IUP was that I hire an engineer to find the BFE of the base floodplain elevation, I reached out prior to that deadline to at least five different firms and got no response back, nobody wanted to do this project for me. Recently, more recently, I did through one of my surveyors that we work with in our contracting business, reach out to another, a person after a person, and got ahold of someone who said that, they put me in touch with a surveyor person who said it would take a topographical survey that would cost us about $20,000 to get that done, to get a, that that wouldn't even give the BFE, that would just get a topographical survey of the area that would be given to FEMA to possibly get a BFE for the area, because this is a Zone A, which doesn't have a base flood elevation given for it, but recently, I did reach out to the DNR engineers and ask for them to give me a BFE for my lot, which is Zone A on the Diamond Creek, and they are able to do that apparently, and I will be glad to share those findings when I get them with you, so that is where I'm going with it now.
And it's likely that's going to open up quite a bit.
My guess is that it will change the area that is outlined based on Hennepin County's information, and as the applicant had mentioned, without that information provided, we just go off of what is existing, and we delineated that area onsite, and it's, it's pretty substantial, I'd say that it is from that north building, that southeast corner of the building, going back to the northwest corner of the back building, is kind of that, that rough estimate area where all vehicles stored on the site should either be within a building, I would say that if it is within a building, that is within that floodplain area, it's not treated the same as if it was outside, but if the, in the event that there weren't being stored indoors, that area would be that off-limits line.
How, so Public Works is right there, how much does that affect that?
How much is the, is that floodplain review going to affect?
Well, I mean, right now, if you were to look at it, how much does that affect Public Works?
The floodplain?
Yeah.
It's like the, your corner of the, just the top corner.
Oh, okay.
Of it, like if you take a quarter of it.
Where the creek goes through, it's basically cuts it off, the, the previous owner sold that portion to the city, so the ball field, your entire city works there, that's on that.
No, it's just, it's just like the corner of the building, I think it's on the floodplain.
Mr. Mayor, I know, I know what you're getting at, and I can certainly provide that information to you in a map, I just don't have that information right now on, at the top.
In the end, you know the, the requirements that Hayden's talking about, and I guess to me, you've got 60 days to comply with that issue.
And has to stay compliant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mayor, members of council.
Go ahead.
My only comment is, I was out there recently for a medical within the last 45 days, and we continue, since fire has gone out and done inspections periodically since the issuance of the IUP, as they indicated, we've had multiple businesses rotate through, and they seem to continue to rotate through, as Hayden has gone out and done investiga- inspections, and we've gone out there with them, but then it seems as though that there's different lawn care companies, or gutter companies, or whatever, the person that we attended to was an employee of somebody at the time, and that was, I'd have to go back and look at the date, but I'm guessing the last 45 days, just for information.
So Gary, do you have concerns then, as far as like this business continuing as it's operating, not maybe necessarily as what it looks on paper, but do you have concerns moving forward that if these people are coming and going, or maybe in these buildings doing what, whatever they're doing with their businesses, do you have concerns that that is a risk? Like for the fire, like for calls, oh goodness, what have you, I just wonder like what, from a fire perspective, do you have concerns about that and compliance?
Yeah, I mean, from a business perspective, I mean, we're looking at this as the IUP is designed as a storage facility, as it bolts recreational vehicles and so forth, since we started with the IUP after it was approved, we've, like I said, we've had lawn care companies, gutter companies, people that are working on their cars within each of the stalls, if you will, and they seem to some leave, but then some return, and that could be, I don't know why, obviously, you said that you've had some issues with some, but we continue to see that, so my concern is, if I'm assuming that that facility is storage of recreational vehicles and boats, but I have a boatload of fertilizer, which we've had in one of the buildings, for lawn care and so forth, then that's a different type of fire if the fire were to start and so forth.
Yeah, I think what he's referencing is the people we've, we've just recently removed within 30 days or less, within the 45 days that Gary's talking about too, whatever was requested by Zach, every time they've been a request for something to remove, or, I mean, like I said, we even, you know, ramped it up a little bit more with the, the trailers, removed them, you can look next, you know, look across, look across the street, you can see they're not there anymore, and they haven't been, and they haven't returned, et cetera, exactly what you're saying, so we've been more careful with our selection of the people that go in, any car guys that said they were going to store their cars there, and, and, you know, I'm not there every day, so I don't know.
Your son is though, right?
Yeah.
He lives there, right?
He does, he does live there, and not only that, but when Noah is a drone, yeah, he works for our drone company, so he has contracts in Texas, he goes to where else in New Zealand.
All of the country, so that's why he's sometimes not there for me, and then they just go against what's going on, and I'm not there.
So I think that's the hard part, is that just the nature of this kind of business, I can only imagine that it is really hard to keep people, like this is what you're supposed to be allowed to do, and keep people in line of, this is what you can and can't do, and then again, if you're not there all the time, it's really hard, even if you are, it's really hard to keep people to that, and so I think that just the nature of this business makes it really hard to say that you know for sure that you're going to always be able to comply.
Even, yeah, even these storage places, they, they're not supposed to do certain things in it, but routinely.
Correct, and I think that that makes, like the nature of the business makes it hard for me to say.
Which is why they shouldn't be in this zone, I mean, that's why it's, they should be in industrial zones or business parks, not in neighborhoods or agricultural reasons, this was supposed to be for the storage of recreational vehicles.
Like cold storage.
Well, what, I think the biggest part, and I'll, I'll say it for my son. Is me saying yes to everyone, that's my problem, I, I like to help everyone out, you know, they, they have a situation, they're like, I need this place, I need to store this stuff, whatever, and then I just like, okay, cool, they seem like nice people, right? And then I don't do the, like the couple that, like, and I can't tell you, but people, I mean, I've, I've been asked for manufacturing, the vape things, the people that do vape, which is essentially marijuana on the site, I mean, any number of things, so, and I pass it by my wife now, because I'm like, what do you think, and she just says no, for sure. So I would say it's more my problem, and we.
It's not your problem, because you don't live there, it's your neighbor's problem, because we have to deal with it, so it's supposed to be the storage of recreational vehicles, and that's it?
If, I mean, if you'd like to come over and look at yourself, I, I'm more than happy to have you come over, I mean, I, I know what your property looks like, it's great, new building, right, looks awesome, I mean, if, if you'd like to come over and take a look, come on over, I have no problem with that.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I was just going to kind of reiterate the direction that we're going with this conversation, that from my understanding, and just looking for kind of confirmation, or if there was any disagreement with this, but if, if I could just ask, would the 60-day allotment be something that the council is interested in moving forward with, and I'll obviously follow up with the property owners after this meeting to talk about what we, what they need to do to get into compliance, and if they are not, we'll document that and bring that back and post notice for a hearing and revoke the permit, is that?
100%, I mean, everything else is.
You guys can cut it out?
We're just talking a lot of fluff here.
I'm not convinced that it will stay compliant.
Bottom line. We're over it.
So that's where I'm at.
60 days, it's over it, non-performing.
And just the nature of the business, I don't know that there, I have definitive proof that it will stay in compliance, and that's where I'm hung up on, again, I agree with you, like, this type of business would be better suited for a different zone, a different area.
Well, I think that's, that's accurate, and again, I think I got to point you back to the IUP, that, you know, the conditions there are the conditions that you have to live by, I mean, we all agreed to that when you got it, so the, the types of business that are allowed in that IUP are the things you can do, and manufacturing, not on the list, so I know you said that that isn't something you went anywhere with, but it's, you know, you have to, you have to comply with what you have, or you, I don't know what the other path is, you know, you come back and ask for a different order.
That's the path.
Well, no, I'm not talking about that, I mean, I'm fully on board with that, I mean, you got to, you got to get and keep your act together on this, or we're going to have to pull it, it's that simple.
And I, I literally just installed like nine extra cameras that actually work, so I can identify, like I can be offsite and still, you know, daily, weekly, whatever, I didn't, you know, look around everywhere and see if anybody's, I've had random people park stuff, I don't even know how they got there, and I can identify who it was, can find out who it was, and we start to get rid of the vehicle, I legally can't, you know, get rid of a vehicle without proper channels, right, so what I've done lately is I've just put it in a building, because it's, now it's inside the building, and that's what it is, so, and I'll deal with it on my own.
Okay, so I'm okay with the 60 days, sounds like you're okay with 60 days, sounds like you're not.
Yeah, 60 days is fine with me.
So you got your three. So if we say, and I'm, I, I know we need to move on, and I apologize, but if, we do, I get it, it was supposed to not be a midnight meeting, but if we say 60 days and they're compliant, I don't know that it's sufficient to just say, okay, that sounds great, because Hayden's going to.
70 days, they're not compliant.
Yeah, Hayden's going to go back out there and peek a month and a half after that, and we're going to be out of compliance.
So then it's gone.
And we're going to be out of compliance again, and then Hayden's going to spend all of that time going back and forth, the fire department's going to go, I, I just, I, the nature of the business doesn't give me any.
We've been battling this thing for a couple of years.
Listen, I agree with you, and that's what.
Likely, in 60 days, we'll be battling it again, and there won't be no battle, it's over.
Definitely be done, so, okay.
I mean, you can access my cameras if you want.
The cameras don't mean anything, you just be compliant when the inspection comes.
I wouldn't want to run a business like this, because there's no, there's no real control, it's not a stab at you guys, I'm just saying that there's no real control over this type of business, and when it's in a residential, agricultural, whatever area, you have neighbors, you get what I'm saying.
I'm telling you, there's these storage places all over the ag.
Yeah, and the ones that are, like.
I hear you, but I've personally witnessed huge burn piles in the back of the property, I sat at Public Works and watched it, and went, what the hell are they burning back there, so like, I'm just, I, I don't have a whole lot of faith, I wish you the best of luck, I don't think your business model is going to make you be able to comply long term, and in 60 days when you're compliant, and then in 90 days when you're, or 90 days when you're compliant, and in 100 days when you're not, I think we'll be right back here. I just want to be honest about it. And then that'll be it, so.
If we are, we are, that's just the way it is.
Okay, that's perfectly fine, then I will go along with your 90 days.
No, 60.
60 days.
60. Tell me your previous camera.
Um, mother of a creep, whatever.
Mayor, members of the council, just to make sure it's clear, Hayden will send out a one notification that'll give him the 60 days notice, that's basically, that starts our 60-day timeline, if it's not done in 60 days, then we will come back for a vacation.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of echo in this room, so.
I apologize, 60 days.
60 days, that all good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's no action or anything, just discussion, so you're good?
Okay, you're good.
Good, okay, thanks, council.
Good luck.
All right.
Hayden.
Nope.
There you go. We're only an hour behind schedule, guys.
I'm sorry.
We were supposed to be done five minutes ago.
I do appreciate the dialogue.
I appreciate you answering my pointed question.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight, you're asked to review a concept plan for Grayco office facility within the Grayco industrial area and their planned unit development along West French Lake Road. So the overall site is currently roughly 27 and a half acres, the expectation that be a portion, which would be the west, or the east portion, excuse me, would be subdivided, and have a office facility, office campus built upon that area, the property is Zoned I-1 light industrial, and is currently under a planned unit development from, from the previous buildings that were approved for Grayco, and is in the current staging area as well for sewer service. So this is a very high-level plan, and just a high-level overview introducing the project, but it is roughly a 33,500 square foot footprint building among three stories totaling about 100,000 square feet in floor area, access would be off of the current drives that are existing on West French Lake Road, connecting into the other two facilities to the north and south of this area, the one item that we were able to at least calculate on a conceptual level, this has not been finalized by any means, but the parking count currently is 277 spaces, I will say that at the full use of this facility, the city of Dayton should anticipate, or could anticipate, between 250 and 300 jobs at this site, and likely the, so there's a couple of things related to the parking that I, we've discussed at length with the planning commission, that was related to some flexibilities that are allowed within the code, so the standard for office facilities is one space per 200 square feet of office area, that doesn't include common spaces, stairwells, maintenance areas, things like that, the I-1 district and the parking regulations do offer flexibility based on maximum anticipated employees at the site, while this could likely be looped into a planned unit development flexibility request, at this time, I don't know if that would be necessary, if we find that per the employee count at the max, the parking would meet that, don't know if flexibility for the PUD would be required at that time, we would consider that consistent, setbacks and other elements like that are undefined at this time, so I'm not going to get into that, but here's an overall view of the site, you can see that there are existing stormwater ponds here, French Lake right here, and the building would roughly be within that area of the site on the western or eastern portion. And they do show a future building as well, not a part of this concept plan, and would not be a part of the initial applications or future application requests, such as the preliminary pla- excuse me, the site plan review conditional use permit for commercial within the shoreline area, and I'll get into that a little bit. Here's some renderings of the facility. So I already touched on parking, the other portion that I wanted to bring up at this point is that a portion of this property is within the shoreline district, which is identified as 1,000 feet from the ordinary high water line of French Lake, meaning that there are additional standards to be adhered to, identified conflicts at this point would be the building height, as there is a requirement within the shoreline district for buildings not to exceed 35 feet in height, this has been flexed previously amongst other industrial facilities that you may see around French Lake, and not a requirement or a required standard in the shoreline district zoning ordinance, that is a model ordinance provided by the DNR, that was an added, added restriction, I guess, for lack of a better term, by the city of Dayton, when the shoreline district was most recently adopted, so I have been in contact with the DNR about this, and that the resident, the 35-foot standard is only a requirement for residential districts per the DNR. The other thing that I wanted to mention too, is that this is a requirement by the DNR, is that the area within that boundary cannot exceed 25% impervious surface, so the applicants have been informed about that information, to adhere to that to the extent possible, because that is a DNR requirement, flexibility per the planned unit development. Because that is a DNR requirement, flexibility per the planned unit development in this regard would not be allowed. They would have to request a variance at that point. And the planning commission did provide feedback on this in that they felt that there was, there was enough leeway in the conceptual design to avoid overreaching or going over that impervious surface maximum within the shoreline. Of course, because only a portion of this, not the entire site, is required to adhere to the shoreline district, it's only that area that's when, within that thousand feet of the ordinary high water line. And this is just to show you what that rough estimate is of that shoreline boundary. So tonight, as I mentioned, just to introduce the project to you, the applicants are here to provide any context and answer any questions that you may have. There is no need for a public hearing, this was a site, or, this was one that I stole from the planning commission presentation from last week, that I did not update that, so you don't have to hold a public hearing, they already did that. But all comments are advisory and not binding. And I'm happy to answer any initial questions you may have.
I do have a question, actually. You said that we had, there was flexibility for previous industrial buildings for the height. Do you remember the height of those, like, guys wanna compare to this.
Sure, yeah. I would say that the one that comes to top of mind is the Invent building, or the Capital Partners project, that you may recall. That was roughly fifty feet in height. And I'll say that in talks with the applicants, there've been discussions that fifty feet is generally the height of the main roof line of this building. However, they are kinda weighing options of whether there is an additional wall that they may install on the top, the roof of the building, to add more screening to that surrounding area for...
Equipment.
Equipment, yep.
So the equipment doesn't count for height, but the wall would?
I, yeah, I would say that the equipment is considered in a pertinence and not subject to those, so, yes. I wouldn't say that, you know, actually, I take that back, an air handler could very well be nine feet tall for all I know, so.
But that doesn't count.
That is correct.
But the wall counts to block.
I would say that it's, yeah, it's the structural wall, I guess, that might make that definition. Split nairs, I know, but it is planning and zoned.
When we say wall, it's like a legitimate, like, part of the building, or is it like a railing, like, what?
So actually, they did provide this.
Screening?
Let me go back. You can kind of see where that idea is, where, up in this, so there's the main roof line, and then if you go back in here, there is a recess line that would be that, that, I guess, screening area.
Because the equipment, I mean, my dad does the heating and sheet metal, or he did, and it's ugly. It's not pretty, so having it screened, yeah.
I mean, it may add also safety, too, for people working on it, like, if you have an actual barrier, so you know.
Well, I think it's interesting.
It's far, it's pretty far, you're not gonna, you'd have to work real hard to fall off the roof.
Listen, harder and make it hard to do the wrong thing, I don't know. My husband does safety, so that comes to mind.
I was allowed to run around an unfinished building sites as like a ten-year-old with any, out of any supervision.
Times are different now.
So in the past, when we've, when we've, these were just part of the PUD that we went above the...
Correct, yes.
Yeah, well, I'll just make my two comments while I have a second here. It's, I find it a little bit odd that we, because most cities, or many cities that I'm aware of, require screening, screening for mechanical equipment. And we don't, apparently, but I certainly would think we would wanna encourage that and then not penalize them by saying, now that, now your building's taller. That part doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, I'll just say that the fifty feet is, the flexibility is regardless of whether that wall will be there or not. And I will say too, that in most circumstances, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, within this city code as well, for I-1 districts especially, that screening is from the street right-of-way. Typically, there isn't a concern with a fifty-foot-tall building and seeing rooftop equipment, so that would be where the, where the distinction comes. If it's ground-mounted, there are requirements that the equipment be screened. And then if it's rooftop equipment, it kinda comes down to the overall height of the facility and what you can see from the right-of-way.
The other thing I wanted to comment on was the parking piece. It's in, in the staff's recommendation that there be a parking study, and, yeah, I, I'm kinda questioning in my own mind the necessity of that. You know, they, they obviously, as they get this building further along, they're gonna know how many people they're gonna put in it. They own that entire campus. I just, I don't know why we need to make too big a deal about the parking.
I think it was a misuse of words within that staff report. I think what I was going for was essentially just show us that there can be more parking added if need be. We don't want to find a situation where they are over or underparked within this specific lot and don't have any room to add on if necessary. So more, so a proof of parking that if need be additional area is. I did also raise the option that in, if there was ever need be, and there, this property was subdivided and there wasn't any more room for added parking within this, being that they would own both sites, they do have the opportunity to enter into a cross-parking or shared parking agreement, essentially offsetting those types of concerns. So that was not elaborated very well within the staff report, and it should've said proof of parking rather than a study.
Thank you. The last comment I had around this was, we're encouraging stormwater reuse for irrigation, and I would just like to echo that we would like to strongly encourage that reuse of the stormwater.
Sure, that was, my guess is that was from Engineer Finley and Stan Tech's team.
Was on page one-hundred-and-thirty-eight of our packet.
Any other questions, your staff? Chair of our EDA apparently wants to ask some question, or...
Has your EDA chair, Tim Hutner?
Up here.
All of them, sir?
People online can't hear you, otherwise.
We need your, we need you into the mic.
We need you in the mic down there.
Right down there.
Down there, sir.
Want to get the good mic? That one's better.
Well, my question was kinda directed towards the applicants. Are they here tonight?
Name and address.
Name and address.
Has any conversation been brought up to higher than building limit?
Sir, your new question?
Have you wanted anything higher than the fifty or fifty-nine feet?
Okay, we can, yeah, when they come up, we'll, we'll hit that one.
You state your name and, name and address into the mic for the record, please, sir.
Name and ad...
Name and address into the mic, please, for the record.
Do I have a home one or shop one?
Home. Home.
Tim Hutner. Thirteen-five through one, Balsam Lane.
Thank you.
Okay.
We all know each other, so.
For the record, thank you.
So it's on the recording.
So you've never talked about anything any higher than that? And no need for that?
I'm done.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. The applicants can come up. You don't wanna say right off the bat, here?
Name and address for the record.
All three of us. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Martin Seacat, I'm the design architect on the project with HGA Architects and Engineers.
Kirsten Musman, facilities manager for Greco.
Nate Pearson with the Tegger Group, I'm the owner's rep to Greco.
Are there addresses?
Oh, yes, addresses. Okay.
All right, sorry. One-one-eight-zero for in Brooklyn North, Dayton.
Thirteen-twenty, Workload Drive, Golden Valley.
Two-four-nine, Chicago Avenue in Bois d'Or.
All right. Do you, do you have anything you wanna say, to add to what's been said already, or?
No, I think to the, the, thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here. I think to the questions that just came up, we haven't considered anything taller than fifty feet. The building size is, we're still working through the final count for employees, but generally, it will be in range within five to ten percent of what was in the concept package. And a lot of that size is driving the parking. The final headcount, and this will all be included in the, the final issuance for the, the land use application, is planning for future growth. So day one, much of the building or parts of the building will just be open for, for growth and providing Greco the opportunity to grow into it. And parking is being planned for that kind of future state. So the fifty feet is really driven by three stories, the floor-to-floor heights that we need, getting parapets, and then the, as was kinda mentioned, the fifty-nine feet is getting to that rooftop screen for the mechanical units, which that is actually set back from the face of the building, so from French Lake Road, it's actually not really visible. It's really providing screening for further away from the property, across the lake, and even on Greco's property, so. Happy to answer any other questions you all have.
Any questions?
I don't have a problem with screening either. Matter of fact, I like Dave's idea, I would, I would prefer it.
I think that's cool.
Yep.
I'm happy.
I think we're all happy that, that you've chosen to locate this building here in Dayton.
Park here, yep. Yeah, good. It's gonna have, well, where's the G gonna go?
It's on the other side. It's right there.
Oh, it's on the side.
Yeah.
Cool.
We're still working through this, so when we, when we go for the, the final land use application, things will be massaged a bit, but it'll be in this, this flavor.
Great.
Yeah. All good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
We don't need to accept anything, council, this is just comments, that's it, so.
On to Ann.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll just note, since this might be just new territory for some of you, the telecom development site, which is Dayton Fields Fifth Edition, per the ordinance within the subdivision ordinance, they, it, there is a requirement that they record the final plat of that property within sixty days of approval, except otherwise noted by or authorized by the city council to grant an extension as they continue to work through their wetland delineations, their watershed approvals, and some revised comments provided by city staff, including engineering. So just basically, this is a resolution approving an extension to that sixty-day deadline to allow them some more time before they move forward with recording and filing for a building permit and so forth.
Are they getting hung up with the watershed, or just various, what? We usually don't seem to have...
I don't, I don't think so, that there, I think that there are essentially finalizing also purchase of the property as well, that goes into that, too.
Oh, okay.
So there's a, there's a couple of moving parts that have been kind of alluded to, yeah.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Mayor, as council, these kind of things will be on the consent agenda moving forward, but we put it on this agenda so you know what it was, so that you understood what it is. You may see these things on the consent agenda moving forward, but we wanted to make sure you're aware of what this is doing, because this is likely the first time you're seeing this, so.
That's appreciated. Do we anticipate this happening more frequently, or just because of...
Probably, because we wanna be more thorough with our reviews and making sure that we're following all of the state statutes and laws, but it really depends on what our process is, too, because if we require more things to be done prior to final plat approval, you may see more extensions of us asking for final plat to be extended, so that we get all of the approvals before, so we're not doing this, so.
And what I'll say too about that as well is that if there is ever routine extensions being requested by these developments, at that point, I think it'd be time to look at that subdivision ordinance to see if there's a standard amendment that we could just resolve that, whether, I've seen it, I've seen it many different timelines, so there's, there's options there as well.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, if sixty days is just not sufficient, and a hundred, ninety days just allows people to get everything done, because I get, there's a lot of moving parts, particularly when you have watersheds involved and you have multiple agencies who all have to sign off and blah, blah, blah. So if ninety days makes more sense, let's just change your ordinance to ninety days.
You just can't be more restrictive, or less restrictive than state, state statutes, state laws, so.
And what's state statute?
I don't know, I have to, man.
Oh, it is sixty days? Okay, so, so we can't do this, so we, okay.
Well, yeah, I said, you may see more of these, just so you're aware. Just wanna make sure.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, Scott, Stephanie, any more questions? All those who favor, say aye. Aye. All those who oppose, say no. Curious five to zero, on to item, oh.
Good evening, Mayor and council, my goal is to get this back on track. We won't be, but that's because we're all behind.
You got it, I'm leaving.
Everything's good? General fund, cash balances, these are very cyclical, which is very good, to know that we're on the same path. We are above where we're at normally at this time last year, just based on our budget, has nothing else to do other than that. So we're doing really well with our budget, that's fantastic. You see, general funding, sorry?
Back up to that one.
Yep.
I just wanna know, what, what drove that spike?
Which, the...
The green, I mean, the, the top spike.
The top spike, so actually being higher than the line, that we normally are way below. It has all to do with when we got our dollars and when we spent them.
It's just, I've never seen it, okay.
That high?
Yes.
Well, it will go down fast. So it, it has all to do with when we got the dollars and...
We didn't have a, suddenly a, a tree.
We didn't find a money tree?
We did not find a money tree, not that I'm aware of. I've still been searching for one. We have one in the back, we replanted another one, so maybe it gets bigger. General fund, good statement, this is generally why you're seeing that larger spike, is because we are three-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars under budget from expenditures at this point than we normally would be, which is good. And we are slightly below budget, obviously, with revenues, and that's just based on timing. We'll get the second half taxes here in about fifteen days, December first, we typically get our second half settlement, so you'll see that on the actual audit. But for now, we are under budget just because of that aspect. I'll touch base on a few different things that maybe we didn't touch base, touch base on before. Number two, the fines and forfeitures are based on the fact that we have not had as many fines this year that we had budgeted for. I'm not overall concerned about it, because then it reflects another set of things. Engineering and legal, we've had more of those than we anticipated, and that's just based on projects and what we've had for legal things this year. Fire suppression's way underneath, and that's based on the fact that we have not hired the two full-timers, and that is also based on the fact that we have not cut our check to the fire relief for their relief pension. We did get that in, I think it came in, it comes in on the fifteenth, supposed to come in on Monday then, and that's a hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars. So that'll be cut to the fire department, fire relief right away, so that'll be in, will be, that two-hundred-and-thirty-one will actually be about a hundred thousand dollars, just in a blink. Any other questions, right away? Fire in through. Cash balances by fund, I don't see any major, major concerns here. These fluctuate each and every year, some of the ones that we touch base on, number fours, are all based on when new development goes in. So if we see development, we typically see an increase in water and sewer and developer escrows and stormwater funding, and those are all related to new development coming in, whether that's related to commercial or industrial or residential development. It also has to do, water and sewer obviously have to do with what our usage was, and we had more usage, obviously, in September when it started to stop raining, but the beginning of the year was pretty wet, so. Any major concerns overall? One thing I do wanna know, and I note this every time, is Fund Three-Forty-Two is funded by the first seventy-five homes every year and not tax levy like it's supposed to be, that's the bond. Right now, currently, we have enough money in that fund to be able to pay the last payment already, so we don't have to then, we basically can forego one year of seventy-five homes. My goal is to continue to use seventy-five homes every single year until one year before that payment is due, and then we don't have to do the seventy-five homes for the last year. And that payment, the reason why it's one year ahead is because we have that large assessment that came in from Skanel. When they purchased the property, they paid us the million dollars worth of assessments, which was assessment plus interest, which is about a million dollars. And that has to do with, I think it was the Wick industrial project that was down in industrial area by ninety-four. So, that's why we're one, one year ahead.
Can you, Fund 401, capital equipment?
Yep.
I guess I don't understand why that one always stays negative.
So, that one's negative until we have all the funding sources available for that, so that is because we sent the money out early for the engine that we purchased in 2023, and the chief's gone. 2023 is when we purchased that and physically paid for it, so we got a $250,000 discount for paying for it early, essentially giving the money early before we received it. So, that money hasn't technically been recouped, and we'll talk about the long-term plan. One of the big funding sources is the $475,000 that we have next year for the tanker that was going to be used for a new tanker, we then put the money into the engine, and we have to levy for that in the future. So, that will help out that 889. It also has to do with the fact that we haven't got the second half of taxes yet in that fund either, and so because of that timing, we're always off by one half of the year of payments. So, I think the number is 750, I believe, into that fund this year. So, if we have $375,000, that's technically not in that fund currently, that would normally be there. So, that's based on timing as well. So, between those two things, that's almost exactly your $100,000.
Thanks.
Yes.
A great question, because again, it shows negative, why are we negative? And we don't like funds being negative, and talk to the finance guy, he doesn't like things negative, so.
Makes sense.
Any other questions? Good question. Water fund, overall, very healthy water fund. Again, we're gonna have some really, really big, large items that we're gonna have to purchase over the next few years, and we'll talk about this one next week, when we talk about the saltwater system, so, again, there's not a whole lot of major items. Number four is probably the biggest one that's over budget, and that's based on these utility rates. Last year, we ended up paying, the update should be off of 630, or 930, not off 630, but we ended up paying the Mapple Grove one slightly late last year, and we didn't figure paying that, so it's not reflective on here, although the numbers are almost exactly the same through last year, as long as we took apples to apples and not apples to apples. Any major questions overall? Overall, this fund is very healthy, which is good, but we do have a lot of things we're going on. One of the biggest things you'll see in the miscellaneous revenues is we have $2.9 million over last year, and that is all based on the federal grant that we have requested dollars back from. So, but we're at two point, I think it's 2.9 or 2.8 million dollars worth of grant money back from the federal government. We have about $1.2 million left. We did request that two, three weeks ago, but since the federal government will shut down, we don't get the money. It is open again, so maybe I can try on Monday. That's my goal. But we will ask for, I think it's about 800, 850,000 bucks that we have to ask for again, so. We're getting close to that $4 million, which is good. So, we're funded, overall, again, very healthy, which is good. I don't have any major issues here, I mean, there's no huge differences. Special services just varies based on what we have going on in the, in our harbor overall, but. Anything I can, and then special services also where I pay Matt council from too, so that's, Matt council's paying. Any comments, questions, concerns, complaints, sewer fund, or any other quarter report? Keep us on task, or on time. Okay?
Your dreams.
Thank you very much.
That's possible at this point?
We're doing it.
Do you have a time machine?
We're doing it.
Okay, on to item, oh, you need a?
Nope, I don't need anything.
Oh, good.
Nope, you guys don't need anything, just wanted to make sure you guys accepted.
Item P, long-term plan.
So, as a discussion, I want to make sure that we do know two things I want to make sure to touch base on, and then anything else you guys want to touch base on. I do have the funds in front of you, I did not make the change for the LC Stevens one, because I was trying to get this done in front of the packet time. I apologize, you'll get a new packet next week if this is all good, or two weeks from now. I do need to update LC Stevens Phase 3 from 1.75 to 1.5 million, because that's the direction the council gave at the last council meeting, I forgot to do that in the updates. And then I did just relabel 3, 4, 5 as best I could. I threw some numbers in there, but those totals only equal 12.5 million. I don't know if the council really cares that much, they're all planning numbers anyways, and technically, it's a little just, my guess is it's going to adjust based on how much is in the fund, is my assumption, but that's maybe a different item for the council to talk about, but I want to make sure that we're all on the same page when I'm putting numbers in here, that this isn't authorizing us to spend the money, we haven't bought a $20 million park, for the record.
How about a new city hall?
And we have not purchased a new city hall.
We should go.
I'm not against it, but, just kidding. 12.5 million's worth on the park, so. Does anybody have any problems with that number, that's a total so far? Hear anything? Okay.
It's just a mythical number for now.
It's all a planning number. Again, it's all based on what we're thinking about, and it could be adjusted, and all of those say TBD, so we don't even know what we're doing yet, so. Seems good for that part. Dedication one, pavement management, I do want to make sure that it's noted that 2026, 2027 are the ones I want to focus on the most. 2026 and the pavement management, management fund is like $3.2 million. We do not have 3.2, $3 million to spend, $3.22,000, we do not have $3 million, $3.22,000 to spend. My thought is we might have to kick a project down the road. Of the projects that are on there, the only one that wasn't really planned for is 126th Avenue, for reference, for 126th Avenue for the council, is that is, what's the development name of that one?
Stoneheart Bridge.
Stoneheart Bridge, that's off of 125th Avenue?
It was pulled off of the.
It was pulled off that one, and the reason for that being pulled off is because that one is blacktop curbing, and it actually has zoo, or curb, or stormwater in the road, and you can't redo that easily, I'm gonna use easily as the term for engineering tier purposes, without major, major curbing. So, our thought is to, if we're gonna redo that roadway, we probably should redo it correctly and put curb in, that actual concrete curb in there, because that's what we have on every other road that has curb and gutter, and this one does not, so. This one has gutter, but not curb. All the engineering, just talk about that one more, because that's, maybe I butchered it.
No, it's just a very unique one, because the curb, curb height varies, so if we deal with, we're going to do something uniform, we're gonna have water trapped on one side or the other, so it's gonna take a little more dilating, and so we, we've actually collected a field survey on it, so we have good information, so we can put a design to it to the best solution.
That project might have to be kicked, because I don't have, we don't have enough money to do that project without doing a larger, either assessment process or something to get the revenues, or push it out a little while.
So, the difference between just repairing the road versus doing what you're talking about is, is not that significant? Or it is?
We don't know yet, but it very well could be, because if we're gonna put in a consent height curb to make sure we're not vacuuming water up in people's yards, we'd have to drop it down, and if we drop it down, we might have to remove all the underlying materials now it's a whole reconstruct. So, we'll look at it closer again, it's just, we were hesitant to just do a standard fix to it based on our visual inspections, we collected some field data, so we can take a closer look.
So, that one might be an item that we need direction, staffing's direction from council on, if what you'd like to do with that specific project. The other ones are identified on the pavement management fund, or the pavement management plan for the five-year plan, and so we think we should continue with those ones. Looking for direction on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna specifically pick 126th Avenue, because we need to know some direction if we want to keep it in there, it's a planning item, if we want to move it out because we think it's gonna be too much, makes the project.
How bad is the road? How, I mean?
It could be delayed. I mean, it's not, it's not an imminent concern.
I mean, it's one thing if we're flush with pavement dollars, but if we're, if we're pushing our luck, it seems like we should.
If we.
Push it out as long as we, as long as we can.
Yeah.
Until it turns into gravel, but.
Yeah, it's not in great condition, but it's also, it's not a, I don't believe it's a tremendous amount of effort to maintain it, for usability at least.
And there shouldn't be much in the way of traffic, so.
I got, I got direction from the mayor, just two more, push it out?
Yeah. Yes.
And then 2027 for pavement management, I think everything else there looks pretty good to me. I don't think there's anything major that's there, and we would only do a couple of projects like the territorial road improvements, we would only do those with the developer, and so there's no point in, we can continue to push it out if you want to, but we'd only do that project if there was a developer, and so it's just kind of a place to live at this point. That's what I have for my requests, otherwise, I'm looking for direction from council, we'd like anything else changed, adjusted, moved, for any of the funds.
For any of the funds?
Any of the funds, you pick one, and we'll, yep, adjust, talk about. The reason why I'm bringing this to you is because I want to make sure, we can have another discussion on the 25th of November too, but I want to try to get all of these things buttoned up, so that I'm ready to go on the 9th, so you guys can throw a project and a plan that you guys are comfortable with.
Can, can you walk me through, I'm, I'm losing track of what we're doing with the engines?
Fire department?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, with respect to the tender?
Yep.
The tanker?
Yes.
It seems like we're planning on having a four engine, go ahead, just.
So, currently in the city, we have two engines. We have had three in the past. We sold engine, God, I'm unable to log one, I bet, I think it's engine 11, we sold that one in order to pay for the new engine that we're looking to do, and that's an engine tender, and so that is basically additional capacity of water on the engine. It costs minimal more dollars to hold that much more capacity. I don't know the numbers off my, off my head, I can get them for you if that's what you're looking for. But it holds a substantially more amount of water than a normal engine would, and so that's what we purchased back in 2023. We removed an engine out of the fleet, we removed a heavy rescue out of the fleet, we said we will allocate dollars for the future tanker that we had looked at replacing, which was $475,000. We allocated those future dollars to pay for that engine, and said we'll just pay for it over time, and then, you know, we may expend the dollars currently, but we'll get them back as we continue to go down the road. So, that's the engine that's currently being built, I think delivery is planned in 2027, from my understanding.
That's the one we're calling the tender.
That's the tender, yep, so that's an engine tender, yep. So, then, at that point, we will have three engines again in the city.
Yep.
I don't know exactly what all of that means and such, but that's, we'll have three.
Well, and I think we have three only because we purchased that one in 2019.
Yes, so we have, we had three before, we're now down to two, we'll be back up to three, because it'll be an engine and tender. The idea is to have one backup as well, that's kind of what engine 21 is going to be used for, that's the one that's currently here that's used out of the station. That'll be used as a backup, so that if we, if and when we ever have something that happens, like this one happened now, or something gets hit, or it's out on a valve replacement or something, we have another engine that we can slide in that doesn't cost us anything. Our goal is to keep engine 21 as a backup, that's the one we spent $40,000 on a new engine for, so the idea is that we don't want to get rid of that, and so hopefully, we can hold on to that one as a backup for anything that may happen, so that we aren't down an engine in the city. And then the only other one that I'm aware of is that, that is the ladder truck. I'm not aware of any other engines specifically. The tanker, we do have as well, and the idea was to sell the tanker once we got the new engine tanker, so we don't have another.
And that's still the plan?
And that's the plan, yes, yep. And unless there's something, direction of, from council that says, hold on to the tanker. There is some advantages to having a tanker, because there are quite a few areas still in Dayton that don't have water capacity. Mobile home park area, areas of Dayton that we may want to. Tanker's probably worth $125,000, something like that. It's in good shape still, it's not, you know, bad at all. We bought it from Farmington, or through McQueen from Farmington, I think we paid 150 grand.
Something like that.
Something like that, I don't remember the exact, I mean, it was 160, and we got a $10,000 discount, because they took too long to give it to us, and we asked for a discount, but overall, we'd be basically net neutral on that one if we were to get rid of it, so.
So, I have a question. It says, replace engine 12, no, wait, hold on. Replace engine 21.
2030.
With a grass rig in it SUV.
Rescue 21?
Rescue 21, excuse me. And then we're replacing engine 21 the following year, so 2030.
Yeah, and that, we could probably change the replace engine 21 to just purchase new engine, because then we, we'd like to keep engine 21 as that backup, because there's no way we're gonna get the money we have into that thing back out of it, especially when we just put a rebuilt engine in that thing for.
Right, with, but a lot of maintenance.
I don't disagree.
Then my other, I don't say grape, my other issue here, it says, purchase a grass rig for Station 3 in 2028.
Okay.
For $100,000.
Yeah, we should probably push that out, because there's no reason to have another grass rig if we don't have a station, so that should be pushed out.
Yes, and I agree with you, because if you flip to page 23, the fire training facility and Station 3 don't happen until 2031, so where would we store another?
I guess it knows just to push out when, you know.
My guess is we didn't take those out when we moved that out, and that would have been, was that last year? I think it must have been missed last year on the long-term plan.
I'm not, I'm just trying to like get the timeline all together, and.
That should be pushed out, good catch, that should be pushed out, I'm gonna make that adjustment now. That should be pushed out to 2031.
Yeah.
With the Station 3, so, very good catch.
And is that, I guess, maybe for my own, like, lack of knowledge, when we say Station 3, we're thinking it's, we purchased it and start building it in 2031? Because it would take you a substantial amount of time to build it, especially at this $20 million? So, why would you purchase, I mean, you could have it all, like, to be delivered, I guess I'm wondering, like, timeline-wise?
We don't have a timeline.
Well, okay, that, that, that's fair, I'm just, I mean, 2031's a waste, but I, not that far, but I'm just wondering, like, you wouldn't purchase something and not have somewhere to put it, i.e. the ladder truck, like, where, where are we gonna put that either?
That ladder truck will go here, but I think there's a discussion on that ladder truck coming.
Well, also, I'd like to discuss the training facility, because I thought we axed that, and it just continues to kind of like move a year and show up. I thought that we said it didn't.
The only reason we did that, and that was the discussion we had last year, was based on the fact that we're asking for grant dollars for that, so it's not in the plan at all, it looks like we're not planning for it at all. We can ax it, and then we just would.
I don't.
It is in there only to, to, I mean.
Yeah.
For grants, but.
Yep.
Even if we got the grant, I'm not.
Even if we get the grant, it barely cash flows, and we'd have to re, respool that up, that conversation up, but.
But I definitely don't, okay, that's.
So, I guess, so I'll stay on that item, because I think it's important to, do we want to ax it?
Ax what?
The fire training facility, because then I won't ask for grant money for it, because it's not.
I, I think right now, we're, so, the grants you're requesting are from where?
Right now, they'd be either from FEMA, they'd be from the state or the federal government at this moment. I'm not actively, like, out there pounding pavement trying to.
The state one's always gonna compete with our other requests.
Yep, and that's why it's item 5, I think, on our list this year.
Yeah. I mean, yeah.
Give me the gavel, let's chop it.
Yeah.
So, I got one to, one to take it away?
Yeah, I take it away.
Take it away.
I guess I'm on the fence about it, because we've talked about it, that it would never move forward without.
Yep.
Essentially, the whole thing being a grant, and, you know, would we say no to that?
I just think that if you're gonna build, and if we're planning to build a Station 3, nothing says that we can't integrate some sort of training area into that station for our people, but I don't know that we are going to be at a point where we're gonna bring in all these other communities, and it's gonna make all of this money, like, I just don't see that cash flowing, it doesn't pencil.
It doesn't cash flow.
And so, if we're going to put money into something, I think that it's better to If we're going to put money into something, I think that it's better to put into that Station 3 and make that something we can continue to grow into, and give space for that training for our people, with it not being the intent of us renting it to others, or hosting our own trainings for other departments. Like, that's not the key function. And especially if we're looking at spending $20 million, and I guess.
We're not, but.
I, I totally agree with that, but I mean, while we're playing with monopoly money, I just feel like that money could be better spent on other things that better serve our department.
So nix the training.
Nix the training. I feel like I had to say that. I appreciate you letting me spew my stuff.
So just clear, I'm by the axing, and I just want to make sure, do you want to add something on the, by Station 3, or just say, ax it totally and not even have it on?
Ax it totally, because I think that that would all be encompassed in the money that we have there for the third station.
I, I meant just in the description, sorry. Not in the money.
No, do not put it in the description.
Okay.
And now.
Ken, you brought up.
I brought up a ladder truck.
Ladder truck.
I personally don't think we need one. We talked about this.
Yep.
I think most of us agreed to do this, because there was a cheaper unit if we did it at this time. Every community next to us that borders this has got one. And we use mutual aid, so what I don't like about it, I don't like how this whole thing was sold to us. Because there was no penalty. Guaranteed. We're not on the hook for a nickel. But now, we are on the hook for 250 grand, if it doesn't get sold. So, to me, if we're looking to get rid of this thing, and all of a sudden, in two years, it's going to be on the ground, the time to be looking to get rid of it is now.
And that was the only reason I voted for it, was because I didn't see any downside.
I did go back and rewatch the meeting, and the motion did specifically state that there was no financial liability. So whether that was not conveyed correctly, but the motion that Matt Tross put out literally said that in his motion. And so I believe that that was the understanding of the council at the time, and so.
Good.
I appreciate that. So, yeah, and I agree with you, and I, I guess I think back to, to the last meeting we had where Jerry.
Jerry, yep.
Came in, and he himself, in that meeting, stated, "If everybody around you's got one, why would you have one?" And so, like, I.
The first, the first study, the first fire study, talked about it, but they talked about it out at, like, 20 years. I mean, it was way out to the end of the study.
Right.
I don't think the second study brought it out. I don't.
It didn't address it at all.
But it died.
And I would be supportive of us saying that we're not just going to, you know, quote-unquote, "use our neighbors" for something, that if we find that the ladder truck is being utilized repeatedly, that I would be supportive of saying, okay, so if you're coming, like, you know, some monetary, because again, there is wear and tear, we have mutual aid, to help each other, not to benefit off of others' resources, if you will. So if we get to that point, I would be supportive of talking about some sort of, give back monetarily to the communities that are bringing that truck and using it in our city. So we're not just using our neighbors.
A question I have is, how many times has the ladder truck come out in the last year?
Not many. It's a highly underused.
Our neighbors? Well, I'd have, we'd have to ask. I mean, we're happy to do that.
I can't tell you how many firemen tell us, "Oh, you're going to get a parade on it."
Yes. Utilized when needed, yes. Infrequent.
So, yeah, so I'm.
If you got it, it's going to be handy. It's going to be handy on occasion. I just don't.
So my question is, do you want to move, it's called an aerial truck on the, on the long-term plan. Do you want me to, so, I think I got, I have direction, and I understand the direction. So do you want me to, so that's a separate, we'll have to make a separate motion, and I want to make sure that that is a separate item on the agenda. So I think we'll bring that back on November 25th, just so that you're aware, so that the councils can make an official motion on that specific item. That way, we have direction specifically and not brought up in a meeting. And I want to push it out. If we can, push it out to the end of the plan. Is that something the council would be agreeable to, that maybe we would need it later on in 2036, or do you want to ax it totally? On the purchase of aerial truck, that's what I'm mentioning. So if we push out the end of the plan, it's 20, 2036, 2035?
Yeah. I, I know that, yeah, I can see it both ways. Whenever something shows up in the plan somewhere, I mean, this, this thing showed up. Originally, it was at, like, 2028, then it was brought back to 2025 or '26, and then, yeah.
Just because it's off the plan, it's, I mean, it can't come back up next year either, too.
No, it's just, I get it. So I, I'd be okay with moving it out. You're saying whether we should just totally nuke it or move it out?
Would you rather have it moved out to 2035, like, the end of the plan, so like, we can still have a, okay, we're going to plan on buying one eventually? Or would you rather just nix it totally?
The issue that I have is, with all of the things that are on here, coming up in '28 to '35, we can use 80 million bucks and not cover it.
You have that?
Now, we're talking monopoly money.
And sooner or later, you got to decide, what do we need and what do we, what do we want?
Yeah. I think you're what, I think the better term is, what's your priorities? Because depending on who the person is, you have different priorities. I don't disagree with that.
Yeah. I mean, it's going to come down to, what can we have?
Question is.
I would get rid of it for now. I mean, in two or three years, when there's another council, you might be back on there, I mean.
Okay.
So I got one with chopping it?
I'm okay with chopping it.
Two with chopping it?
I'm okay with moving it.
Moving it?
I was okay with moving it.
Moving it?
Oh, shit.
Look at you.
Oh, look at you.
You speak last.
You get to decide something.
Damn it.
You're the swing boat.
I don't see a need, and I do agree that if we just push it out, it will more than likely be right back, and become a necessity when and if that third station happens. And so, for those reasons, I say remove it completely.
Yep.
I also have one other thing on there, not to beat up the department, but we have, in 2029, a $90,000 for a fire marshal vehicle.
Oh, yeah, I've seen that.
I think that that should be better aligned with the five-year plan that we have yet to see, and I don't think that, even with the five-year plan we did see, that is not in alignment with that.
Was the fire marshal in 2028, do you remember?
It was farther out.
It's, well.
It was five years. It was, it was not in the fi, first five years, because I had that question, because I asked. The position that we had doing these, blah, 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 what changed, because all of a sudden, it's not needed. It was desperately needed, and then it was shoved out five years. And so it was not until 2030. It was pushed all the way.
Was it 2030?
It was 2030. So we don't need to purchase a vehicle in 2029 for that, and I also struggle with, we have two vehicles here all day long. We don't need two command vehicles on a scene. We have plenty of apparatuses to whatever. And so there, I don't see a reason why the assistant chief's truck could not also be used for the, for the fire marshal. I don't see the point of us having three vehicles just sitting around in the parking lot. And so, yes, the command vehicle can stay, but if need be, our assistant chief can hop on a truck and take a different vehicle. We got plenty of apparatuses, four wheels. So I don't see the point in spending $90,000 at them, on something like that, in my opinion. I also have questions about the replacement of the chief's pickup truck in 2027. I think we talked about that, and how it does not idle the same way a police vehicle does, which need to be replaced more often. And so I struggle with, how many miles do we have on that vehicle? And does it need to be a full replacement in 2027?
Are you talking about the assistant?
Correct.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, how old?
We had this conversation before. It's a couple of years old, and there was the thing about it idling outside, but it doesn't idle like a police vehicle. Idles all day, then it never, then it never shut off. Fire vehicles are not like that. You drive it here, you park in the parking lot, you take your thing. And so I don't think that that's a valid argument for me to warrant spending 90 to $100,000 on a new vehicle. That feels very steep to me, and I, I just, I question, any more information before I'm okay with that being in 2027?
Yeah, so I'll also, I'll speak up for that one, only because we are trying to do a 10-year turnover on vehicles. And so you get the most money with the vehicles for 10 years. That's typically how it works. I'm not saying we can't keep that vehicle for long, because we can. I'm sure the miles aren't that high on it. It's the years of it. And typically, after, and this is no different than on a personal vehicle yourself, you get so many years, and then it's worth so much money, or you can run that thing into the dirt, right? And you get nothing for it. So I'm fine with either direction. We've tried to change it to having a 10-year replacement, just because we get the most money for that vehicle.
What do you expect the turnover on that truck to be?
A turnover, what do you mean?
So like, the amount of money that you're going to get for it, can you ballpark that? Because, again, we're still in the hole. Like, the math doesn't math.
Well, no matter what.
No matter what the vehicle, the math doesn't math.
That vehicle.
Agreed, but if we're saying we want to replace it in 10 years, because it's going to be worth $30,000, we're still spending $60,000 out of the budget to get a brand-new one, and then we're just doing the same thing over. We're still spending the money.
Yep, it's just the fact that we can try to get as much money for it as possible. Doesn't mean we can't push it another five years, because we can. The prob, the issue that you run into is that it's not working. Usually, you can use your $30,000 assessment, or it could be 15, $10,000 after it's 15 years old.
It's going to be worth.
To me, you're running the ground.
I don't think it's going to be worth much anyway, and I don't think it warrants a brand-new vehicle. I'd run it, yeah, if there's no issues with it, I don't see the need to replace it.
Yeah.
Like I said, that's the difference in what was on the plan, is now a different idea, so.
Well, now is, I mean, when we brought this up for Public Works Vehicles, too, I had a similar question, like, but like, that was, you know, you're salting and whatever, like, the, the bodies.
I would highly recommend Public Works Vehicles being placed every 10 years, because of the salt and the wear.
That makes sense.
That's what I'm saying.
There's not a lot of stop and start.
There's a lot of start and start.
And then police vehicles, like, idle, like, that makes sense to me. I just feel like the fire department is fundamentally different, and the use of the vehicles is fundamentally different. So I would be comfortable, do we know what year that, that pickup is?
It's 2017, that's why it was in 2027.
I would be comfortable shoving that out a couple of years farther, because I just don't.
It's not the same kind of use.
Exactly.
It's one thing for, like, they're not all the same.
Yes.
So just to have a, a single policy.
So 2030, that seems like a reasonable number. 2031?
No, we got to go far. 32 is five years, isn't it? One, two, three, four. That's 15 years, would put it in 2032.
2032.
At that point, it may just.
I have pretty much.
At that point, it may be, it'll be a full, it would be a $90,000 purchase, and that's fine with me. I just, it doesn't make sense.
2030, I just want to make sure.
Correct, 2032.
2032?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I just wanted to ask, have we ever looked at leasing those vehicles the way that we are doing the police vehicles?
Yes, but it's more expensive because of the number of them that we need. Because the veh, the police vehicles, there's so many of them that you get.
I was going to say, the few numbers.
The volume of them that we need, it ends up being way more expensive for us to do the police vehicles. If you do the fire vehicles, I mean, you can do it on, in that same model, but then you're replacing them every four years.
What is so expensive about them?
Um, what do you mean?
Well, 90 grand, uh, for a pickup. I assume we equip it.
You got to equip it and stuff, and I don't know, it might not be 90 grand.
Equip it with what exactly?
I would have some lights and new equipment there, but.
That you can't see.
So I, I, I don't know why it's 90 grand?
Okay, so, so that number could easily be 60.
60 grand.
40 grand, or 60, you know, whatever the number is.
Yeah, it's just 90, and I assume that they were especially.
They're not special, no.
By 2032, they probably will be.
Well, that's, that's actually very true.
2032, they might be 90 grand, so I don't know if we want to change the number, but. And then it sounds like, I need to, so I'm going to go back to the fire marshal, because we went to the assistant chief replacement pickup. The fire marshal vehicle, we want to nix that one?
I say nix it, because.
Until we know.
I think one of our people we currently have would be our fire marshal.
I got one nix.
That's where I would go with it.
Yeah.
That's where we were hired to do it.
Yeah. Three nicks.
Yep.
And then, for me, didn't, there's just a question. Did we not already buy a boat, a rescue boat?
Yeah, I was wondering.
Yeah, I had a similar question about the boat. And also, how often does it?
We just recently bought one.
And how often does it get used?
So we have, Stephanie might know more about the use of it, and I, I don't. So what I'll say is that we did buy a new Station 1 boat, and that's a riverboat specifically, for the river. That's up at Station 1. Right here now, we basically have one of those inflatable boats. I don't know how often it's used, I'll be honest with you.
Why wouldn't we take it from Station 1?
We always had two boats, I.
I know.
But why, why does it need to be replaced, is my question? What does the replacement mean?
Replacement would mean, yeah, we.
Is it, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I shouldn't clarify my question.
Get rid of the air one and put one that's got.
We have the, we have the speedboat, though, don't we? We have the.
Speedboat.
It's only a speedboat, but.
We have a riverboat.
There's a riverboat.
There's a boat. There's a fly bottom boat.
That Santa rode in?
Um, yes, that's the one.
She's fancy.
That's a riverboat. We got a super deal on that thing.
I think it's neat, I, listen, we have the river, I think that's fine.
I don't know, I'm going to default to the chief, because I don't know why we would replace it. I don't know how old that one is, and I know that they would know more than I would, so I don't want to answer it.
I guess, it, I guess there's a reoccurring theme of, oh, we've had it for a while. We should get a new one, and I just, don't fix what's not broken, I guess, and if it's not causing a substantial, um, maintenance, I just, I don't, I don't understand. And maybe, well, I can't say that, I'm going to be polite tonight.
Yeah, well, it may get to the same. I mean, there's also, these extrication tools again.
Well, that, until we get, until we get an actual, we don't know that we can get them fixed for little or nothing, or.
I understand it.
I mean, they can stay there for now, as far as I'm concerned, but we're waiting for, we're waiting for, uh.
Is that the deal?
Yeah, there should be Station 2 and Station 1 extrication tools.
Okay.
I apologize about that. I tried to copy them up and replace them, and then.
So we would have them at both places?
We currently have them.
We already do.
We currently have them at both places.
Correct.
Because you have to have them on both engines?
We're waiting for a, some work with Jefferson Fire on the, on the $40,000 one that we talked about two weeks ago.
Yeah, so that's on to like 30, whatever, because you guys approved a few of the $1,000 worth of stuff, and it was a couple of the Colts or whatever that we got. A couple of those were approved in the.
Yeah, everything except for the.
Whatever the, there was like 35 grand or something like that.
Something like that.
34 grand?
For the battery.
So the boat is on there only because it's a planning item. If you guys want to push that, I'm fine with it. I think it should stay in the plan, because we will need to replace it eventually.
Yes.
Nobody knows the date. I, that's why 2028 was used. If you guys want to push it to 2030.
31.
I guess I would just like to know what the age of the boat is. I mean, because that one's been here since.
It's been here a long.
A long time, like, before our time being affiliated with the department. It's been here a while, although I, again, it's not a used every week, used every month. No, my husband did a river rescue.
Oh, and they didn't use the one down at Station 1?
They used both of them, I think.
I think, yeah, I think they were.
I think they had both of them.
Yeah, they went, scooped up a couple of kids in the river. I like my sound effect. That was last, last year, so I think, yeah, we had the, the riverboat. That was.
It was a year or two ago, yeah, but we had the riverboat at that point.
It would have been July, was when the rescue was.
It just seems odd to me that each station has one, but.
I mean, I understand, well.
Again.
I was trying to make an argument of location, but I guess I don't, we go in. I would just like to know the age of the boat. I think, I don't know that I want to, like, shove it down to the wind, but I would like to know the age of the boat, and what we were placing it with, is it like in same, is there a reason why we would want a different boat? And then I can get on board with that, but just saying to replace it because it's been here a while, doesn't sit right.
I don't know the answer.
I mean, no, again, that's a chief question.
Yeah.
No, and I guess that's my question before we.
I didn't say anything positive or negative. I just want to make sure that, it's on the plan to replace it. I don't care if you guys move it a different year, but I think it should be replaced eventually.
Yeah, agree, I agree.
When that date is, so.
Scott, you were saying, move it up to 30.
30, 31?
31.
So I got two for 31?
I'm good with that.
Three for 31.
Sure.
Sold. Anything else?
Marty, this nursery thing. Um.
Which page are you on?
Dude.
This is on the next page from 404, for the nursery you're talking about.
I've, I've said this in the past, and it just strikes me as odd that we can produce trees than, than we can buy them. Are you, do you not believe that? Do you think we can?
I think, from what a conversation I've had with the Hennepin County Forestry Department, they buy their seed stock, and they produce their trees for around 75 bucks, whereas we're paying currently 400 bucks per tree.
Yeah, by the way, I just met with, I don't remember what her name was, but she said that they will sell those, they, they have a lot of trees, they sell at, at cost. I would assume you already know about that. She said that we, that Tier 1 inventory we were doing, or we did, does that ring a bell?
Hmm, no.
I, I remember it, and she actually reminded me that we had done that, and she's waiting for Tier 2 requests for trees. Does it ring a bell?
Who would have done that besides you or I?
I want to say it was sometime last year, but, where we had, where we were going, it's an inventory on our parks. Yeah, I don't know. I'll, uh.
I'll follow up on that, because I don't, I don't remember that.
Ash tree inventory?
Nope, it was just an inventory of all the public areas that they would grant.
I'm pretty good at remembering that supplement.
Yes.
Does it ring a bell now?
I know that there is a grant for inventory of trees.
And she said we applied for it and caught it.
I didn't, I'm not recalling.
I don't remember ever approving anything, that's why.
No, I don't recall. I found out about this grant from Hennepin County just recently. We haven't applied for it, as far as I know, in the past.
Okay.
Unless somebody did on our behalf, and, you know.
I, 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 I'm almost positively talked about it. It kind of doesn't matter, but anyways, it's a source for trees. And, and she said that they don't get a lot of requests for that, because they require an inventory first.
Yep.
And she said, she looked right at me and said, "Dayton's the only one that, Dayton and, uh, never, there was one other city that had done."
Heck, yes, I don't know if we did, but we did it.
Marty, didn't you have land on there for this nursery thing, too?
It's going to be at Public Workshop, so there's.
I was going to suggest.
Yeah, that's where it's going to go.
There's a whole bunch of land back there.
So we figured a site out beside the shop there, by the mound there. Hennepin County looked at that and thought it was a great site. We're going to put a tree nur, uh, some gravel beds in there, and then an actual nursery for the ones that we don't get in the ground that year. The tree stock is going to be grant-funded, so there's a lot of grant stuff that is available to, through the DNR and Hennepin County. So I'm not 100% sure what the city input on this is going to be, but I'm pretty sure that we can get about 80% of this paid for with grant money.
Okay, cool.
I just thought of something. You're going to need some fence to keep the deer out of there.
And guess who's got some.
I got these guys to keep an eye on that.
I think you already covered this, like, the park, the 2026 1.5 million, and the stuff we just talked about.
Yep.
Is that just simply because we threw the 1.5 out there? You guys haven't gotten prices on anything, right?
No, no.
You guys gave us a 1.5 million dollar price tag.
That was the.
Upper limit.
That's what we're going to use there, and I didn't update it when I was updating all the Alcee Stevens to do's and stuff.
I have a question. On page 17. The land purchase for a community park? What do you mean by community park?
That would be a large.
Like a, like a complex? So we're actively putting money, we put money away this past year, we're actively putting money away for that?
For about the last five years we have, yeah.
Well, that's news to me.
Currently, our balance is, I did this calculation, because I think the mayor asked a question last year, when we were going through this, and said, "How much money did we put away so far? Because it's varied every year?"
No, it's always been 150.
No, it has not.
Hasn't it?
Nope. Did my research last year, and the first year, we put away $250,000. That was 2018. And, and we've put $150,000 every year after that.
Oh, that's.
It's, we're at, 2025, we're at $1.3 million.
I see why. I wasn't here in 18.
1.3, you said?
One point three is the current balance as of the end of, well, when we get our tax money and.
So the construction of the phase one in twenty twenty-nine?
Yeah, that would be, that would have to be done by referendum more than likely, because there's no way we're gonna have.
We don't even have the land yet.
Two million dollars.
Well, then I guess it's kinda what I was getting at, is that realistic?
No.
There would be a partnership with C D A, they have mentioned that they would.
Right, I just.
I don't know how much of that is. That's up, you guys tell me the direction you wanna go.
These are very loose plans, we can leave it in.
Agreed, but anything that's in that five year, I took a little bit closer look, you know what I mean?
Oh, I, I focus on two, but yeah.
Well.
Two is the ultra focus, so we need to make sure those are like really hammered out. Everything after that is really fluffy, after you get past five years, it's really, it's really fluffy.
I operate in a long-term planning world, where we're like fifteen years, the five-year plan is like the, yeah, that's like what we're doing, then fifteen, twenty.
We're like, like, two is like.
Okay, so I need to narrow my focus.
And even that's.
Okay.
Two was like.
Can very quickly be adjusted, but one is like ultra focused.
Anything can be, but I just.
That can happen, if there's no money, it's not happening.
Oh, agreed, but I was just like, oh, I guess I didn't realize that after that joint session we had with the Parks Commission, and we were like really looked at what it would cost to do something like this, I didn't know that it was still on the plan.
Well, and, and at the time.
I'm not upset about that, I like that it is.
The direction was just, I think the direction was to staff was just to keep your eyes out.
Eyes and ears out? Yeah, I guess I just didn't know we were actively putting money away for that purpose, and I'm, I'm very happy to hear that.
It's not very much, but again.
I'm assuming it earns interest while it's sitting there waiting to be.
It does, I did not calculate any interest in that number.
That's, that's fine.
Purely the number.
We don't need any adjustment, I just wanted to clarify that, that is what that was.
Okay, well, this is a corner out, go ahead.
In twenty twenty-six, we have two hundred K for the, the area twenty-one park, the second phase of that.
Yep.
And I guess my question just is, do we own that whole park now?
We own three of the four corners, the fourth one, we have been told is gonna be done with the D C M farm second edition, possibly when he comes in with the Sundance Greens twelve, is it thirteenth? But I don't even know addition or anything.
Twelve, twelve?
Twelfth edition, so we don't technically own the fourth quarter yet, we own three of the four, and we developed two of them and not the third.
Yeah, so how do we go, I mean, there isn't a phase three for this, and we can't really develop land that we don't own.
My suggestion would be to move it to twenty twenty-seven, my suggestion, at least one more year out, because we can't develop an extra without knowing a plan. So it takes one year to plan, one year to develop it.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't sound like we could actually do it anyway, so we might as well.
Yeah, we would not be able to do the full part, we could do another quarter of it, but two and a half acres is probably not, I mean, you can get ball field bases, or you can get a few other trails.
Even then, you may be compromising, because you don't have that.
Yep. So I'm fine, do you wanna put it to twenty-seven, I think it needs to be soon, because it should be finished, but.
For sure.
Twenty twenty-seven seems like a reasonable number, and then we will revisit it next year, and if it's something that we can push out another year, great, if not, then, you know, does that seem reasonable? Okay, sorry, I wanna make sure, twenty twenty-seven? Okay, I need to make sure, I got three people that vote twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, sure. Yeah, that's fine, I have strong feelings.
Just, well, I just wanna make sure that I got the direction, because if I don't have a majority, then we're not on the right page, so.
These, on that same, well, in the same fund, but each twenty-one, our. How much of this was covered by grants?
Oh, sorry, which fund are you?
So you have the Water Trails Access Historic Village, you have Water Trails Construction Phase One.
I think we're still hoping for money.
So Water Trails Phase One is completely covered by grants. We have National Park Service, we have a federal grant, both those total eight hundred and fifty thousand, or nine, nine fifty?
Nine fifty.
Eight fifty is the federal grant, a hundred thousand dollars from National Park Service. Water Trails Access Point at the Historic Village is covered by the D N R.
Oh, that's, that's right.
That's automatically covered by the D N R, and then the Water Trails Access Point on Gooden Park, that's the one we talked about, that's the L C C M R money. We will utilize through his park district and then the city, which we should, I should, I need to adjust that a little bit, because that'll actually be covering out of the federal grant or the National Park Service dollars, instead of out of our money, so I need to adjust that a little bit. And I'll adjust that soon, but that will be paid for by grant, that's about, I think our contribution is two hundred grand, that's what I mentioned. And most of that should be covered by the grant, we might have a small amount of dollars from the trail fund, but a very, very minimal. So we'll have three access points, and basically we'll be out, we'll, we'll spend a hundred thousand dollars-ish, maybe two hundred thousand dollars of city dollars for those three ins and out launches.
The trail on Pine View, the three fifty, even outside twenty twenty-eight, that three fifty seems kinda like, given what.
That might be, now that I look at it, that probably has not been inflated as it's been pushed out, so we'll take a look at that.
Well, and the southern part that was put in, as I recall, was closer to, I thought it was closer to six or seven hundred.
No, that was like a hundred and thirty.
Hundred and forty grand.
It gives a lot less, but it was also a much easier section.
Oh, maybe that was if we had done it on.
Yeah, if we did it on, yeah, if we did it on, we're gonna call it the west side of the road, we would have much more expense than the east side.
The only problem with that was, we didn't have, we didn't have right away on one of those properties.
One property we do not have right, yeah, we do not have, we have some heading north on the east side, we don't have all the way.
And that one, I, I mean, until we know what's gonna happen with that intersection.
Yeah, so that was supposed to line up with it, I think we should push it to twenty twenty-nine, in my opinion, because that's when the plan, if and when we get an intersection improvement at that intersection. We will only do that trail extension if it's actually a safe crossing, because there's no point in putting people to an unsafe crossing, and then now you have a, you either run or you don't run.
It's a messer. And then the.
So I'm gonna change it to twenty twenty-nine, is that a good direction?
I'm good with that.
Twenty-nine?
Yes.
Twenty-nine?
Sure.
Okay, sure.
The, the trail along North Diamond, we had talked about that a while back.
Yep.
I don't remember exactly how it was resolved, but it looks like we're gonna try to coincide with the, the updated river route. So did that three hundred, I, I noticed sometime last summer, and I forgot to ask about this, but there's power lines there.
We are planning on not going down North Diamond Road to where you're thinking, we're gonna try to go between the homes.
Yeah, we talked about going between the homes.
Yep, oh, and that did happen, or that was?
Look, we've had discussions with the property owner, we do have a willing provider of an easement on that side, however, we have not willing owners on the opposite side of the road for the landing, if you will, on the crossing, so that's, that's been the holdup.
That's what the holdup is, so that's why we need to push it to twenty twenty-nine, but we should probably get the follow-up on that, Jason, and get that easement secured, so that we're good to go, because we do have a willing seller on that side, we wanna make sure that we're gonna move forward.
And the problem is, we don't have.
The other side.
On the sell side, so next to Vine Wood, there's a very small quarter of two properties that needs to be lopped off to get the landing safely, and they're, and they're not willing to provide the easement.
Okay. At, at any cost, or?
We haven't got into further negotiation.
Sure, okay. It's just, they're not being hard negotiators, they just said no.
They flat out said no.
Yeah, they flat out said no. It's hard to negotiate, I need to say.
Yeah, it's kinda hard to work, I don't think I have any other questions, anybody else?
This is just for clarity, Marty, Public Works.
Gotta beat you up a little bit.
A little bit, I mean, utility body sign truck, what, what is a body sign truck?
Okay, so it's a bigger, bigger truck, you, you've probably seen the utility truck go by with the crane on it and stuff like that, it's that style of a body.
Okay.
And there'll be some, a crane on it for pushing in the signs and pulling out signs, that kind of thing. We will have the panels in for storing all your panel, for your, you know, your securing devices and stuff like that. It was probably gonna have a transfer tank on there for some diesel, since we have a, a new diesel generator at, well, five. So that will give us some extra capacity to fill that if we need to, as well as filling trucks and skid stairs on site.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted, because it was an expensive truck, so I was just curious what it was.
It is.
But I also noted that it was, I liked this, it was replacing a nineteen ninety-nine, to the previous comment about like not just replacing something because it happened to hit a time on the calendar, but because it.
It's thirty years old?
Yeah, because it has in fact worn out, and we need a new one.
And we bought that one used as well, so.
Yeah, so, thank you. Also, I had to be, I mean, someone, I feel like the fire department just got hammered on, I felt like we had to share it out a little bit.
Some years, Marty gets hit pretty hard, but.
Well, and, I mean, it's out in twenty thirty-four, but I'll just say, I don't understand why we need an armored vehicle, and I'm never gonna say yes to an armored vehicle.
The reason for that is we added it last year, so we can start looking for grants for it, that's why.
But why does the city need an armored vehicle?
There you go, Sergeant Johnson.
I know what it is, but.
So we've been seeing it used by agencies in the area more and more frequently on a barricaded suspect call, which happens more frequently than you'd think, involving a weapon, it provides the officers capability to go get the truck, roll it into the driveway, like give commands from a safe distance or a barricaded suspect inside of a vehicle and stuff like that. So I know Maple Grove has it, Hennepin County, we've been seeing a lot of cities purchasing them more and more often.
Maple Grove has a budget of forty-eight million.
Yeah, but I'm just speaking to what it is.
Yeah, no, I just, I don't like the militarization of our police departments.
I would prefer not to have an armored vehicle either, but again, we have real life, and what we want to be is still.
Is that frequently used, or like, I don't think it'd be a direct number, but like, is this like, it's gonna go out twice, you know, and I don't think it'd be a perfect.
It'd be hard to say with us, you know, what year, twenty thirty-two, or something like that, but.
Oh, thirty-four?
Twenty thirty-four.
It's out of the five.
I hear it used quite frequently in other cities on calls, just with anything involving a weapon or even a vehicle where people aren't leaving the vehicle, as a way to get advantage or communicate with the person in a safe manner, so.
That makes sense, I guess I was just more or less, you answered my question, but more or less looking for the, is this something that's gonna sit there and not be used, and it's like that once in a perfect storm, or would this be something that, it doesn't have to be used every day or every month, but you know what I'm saying? Like there are certain vehicles, like for the fire department, that get used twice a year.
Yeah, I think the chief would have to answer that, once it gets closer, and yeah.
I appreciate your answers.
Couldn't you have a spot?
Marty, as long as we're on you.
I'm sorry, Marty.
It wouldn't be fair if I didn't have some kind of a comment, you know?
Okay.
Not a big deal. Uh, the, the field marking thing, does what we have work, even though it's twenty years old? Because it probably only gets used three, four times a year.
It gets used a lot more than that. All the way through the spring, summer, and into the fall, that thing gets used at least once a week. Yeah. We have a lot of fields to mark out, and it's ball fields and soccer fields and lacrosse fields and football fields.
Can it's falling apart?
Say again?
Is it falling apart? Or is it functional?
It's starting to show its age, we got, we got one, we got two at the moment, one stays in the old village, and that one is very old. It's been here longer than I have. This other one, the newer one, again, is starting to show its age as well, so we wanna replace the one in the old village with the one that we're using at this end.
And take the one, that one over to over there.
And put the newer one up here, because that's where the most usage is.
I'll let you off the hook.
Thank you.
About a, about a GPS controller for.
Yeah.
What the hell is that?
It's seating, right?
This is kind of a wand.
Yeah, this is kind of, I'm not a hundred percent behind this just yet, but it's something that, you can, the thing will market the, the lines out itself, you program it into the machine, and it remembers it, and you just let it go, and it, and it'll do that. It also, when you do your fertilizer, you can put that onto the fertilizer spread, and it will, you know, automate your flow of fertilizer and stuff like that. So it's a, it's a dual-purpose thing?
It's a toy.
Yeah, it's.
We don't, we don't need one of them.
It's probably an efficiency thing, right?
Trying to make ourselves more efficient here, Scott.
Might as well, sixty grand.
I don't disagree, I mean, I'm not saying that I want to spend sixty grand.
Hire an employee, a hundred and twenty.
Why would you do that?
Oh, let's buy it now, because there's gonna be more money in ten years, right?
I would rather that, though, than spend fifty grand to make one of our fire engines into a showpiece.
Well, that's for, so that's for fire station three. I think it's fifty thousand, yeah, so we have a nineteen.
Original engine one refurbished showpiece, fifty thousand dollars.
I think it's nineteen forty-something?
Forty-three?
Four, yeah, it's old. And it's basically just a piece that would be able to, you know, it's kind of a cool piece that would happen.
I know, but it's fifty thousand dollars, and there's other things we could.
Again, that's a, I would say, that's a random guess, and that's a, we don't have a clue number, so.
The tech college at one point said that they would help to restore it, and they would use their students, but we didn't have a way to get it there, was the problem, or that's what I was told. When we first, because they used to sit outside at the old Public Works building, and.
Yep.
Man, but at one, I was told, because I asked about why we were just leaving it out there to rot and get worse, and I was told that the college had said that they would work to restore it and use their students to learn. And so I'm wondering, like, I understand, this is again twenty thirty-one, but is that still an option? I think, I was told the problem was is that we couldn't get it over there, and something about being able to get it into their.
Their shop or whatever.
Yeah.
We'd be able to do that now.
So I'm just wondering, is that offer still on the table, and like?
I don't think it's ever not gonna be on the table, to be honest with you, if we ask the college, I mean, they're always gonna have people that are working on it, hopefully.
So are we then saying that maybe this is materials, is that what this fifteen?
Yeah, this is a, I would say, this, the chief and I both looked at and said, what's a number that seems reasonable, and we just threw fifty grand, it could cost five thousand dollars, I have no idea.
Okay.
We haven't done any research, we haven't asked anybody, we haven't done anything, it's just a number, because it's so far out, it's.
I was just saying, if you're picking on Marty for the efficiency thing, this is not that much.
Yeah, no, I agree with you.
Yeah, no, I don't.
One of them actually, to Amy's point, saves time and employs time, which is actually, and the other one is just, is a toy, so one of them is not actually a toy.
It wouldn't even be a toy, it would just literally sit there.
It's a hood ornament. Okay.
Supposed to be something cool to show to our history of where we were at at one point.
Where it'd sit?
Uh, it would sit, well, if we did fire station three, whenever that would be.
Twenty million dollar fire station.
Yeah, whenever that would be.
We gotta build a building around it.
Yeah.
Well, it would be something like a piece like they have in Monticello, I think that's what they have, the same thing.
Curiosity than what if they registered with the state, and.
It would be cool.
Like we require residence vehicles to be.
So it would be inside.
Licensed?
It'll say fire on it, I'm sure. I think it's very similar to the Monticello fire station that they put up, that would have, I think it's a glass area that they have, and they have a very similar old style. And I think it even sits on a little spinning thing, I'm not saying it's gonna have a spinning thing. Yeah, I think so, I, I'm not saying we have to have that thing, but.
I mean, if there's someone who wants to hand us the cash for it, I wouldn't say no, but do I wanna spend our money, taxpayer money, on it?
He said, I don't, maybe the showpiece is something we work with the college and say that maybe that's what.
I originally asked for parades, that's why I had inquired about it.
The fifty thousand dollars will now restart to be able to run them.
No, absolutely not.
Although, we can try it.
Manpower, we need.
Okay, sure. Any other comments on the long-term plan?
No, dear God.
I will send out, do you want me to send out another version of this in PDF, so you can look at it, do you want to just say?
Can we have a Cliff Notes version of like, these are the things that we changed?
Oh, I don't know, or something?
No, because I just automatically did them, as you were telling me.
Oh, then never mind, go ahead, then that's fine, I just wanna make sure that we encompassed everything that we talked about, there's a lot of move this and that, just making sure we did it.
I can tell you the two things we axed were, a few things, fire marshal vehicle, aerial truck got axed. We moved out the assistant chief vehicle, we moved out the boat for station two. We, that was pretty much it on that.
Fire training facility, got that?
That's a different fund, so.
Oh, sorry.
I haven't got to that one yet.
My bad.
Talked about the nursery, we adjusted the park to one point five million to one point seven five million, we moved out the second half, phase two of Sundance Grayware and Trails, Park, whatever that comes to name to be, that's to twenty twenty-seven now, we had conversation on the community park overall. We talked about, and the next one would be, talked about the trails, how many dollars were put there, nothing got changed in dates that I'm aware of. We talked about, and the next one would be, talked about the trails, how many dollars are put there? Nothing got changed in dates that I'm aware of. The four-ten, which is the training facility fund that got removed. Anything else I think has got changed on that one for now? Payment Management, we talked about moving one-twenty-sixth Avenue reconstruction out to a further year, whenever that is. Do we have a date? Do we want to move that to twenty twenty? I don't want to add it to twenty twenty-eight because that's enough knowledge in that, that year.
Twenty twenty-eight's never going to happen.
Nine, twenty thirty. Do we want to just say kick it down two years? I mean, take it off completely? I guess I don't know what your thoughts are.
What were we talking, I'm sorry.
One-twenty-sixth Avenue reconstruction, you guys talked about that could be kicked down the road, but I didn't get a date. It's the only one I'm missing. Jason, do you have a general idea? Five years, kick it down the road?
I mean, we'll be re, I don't know if this will matter or not, but we'll be reevaluating in the streets the end of next year, so we'll have a new plan coming into twenty twenty-seven. I mean, there'll be some carryover, but we could also reconsider it as part of that.
So do you want to move, I'm going to move out to twenty-sixth. I don't want to have it on next year's plan, so I'm going to just kick it to twenty-seven or do you?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
And then even if we kick it out to thirty, if we, if we have it in mind and, and things look good, then we can pull it back, but twenty, it's fine.
Okay.
Any other?
That's all I have for changes.
Are we good?
We have a replaced asphalt parking lot, Fire Station Two. We don't have any asphalt.
That's the stage, that's this one here. That's this parking lot here.
Oh, that's okay.
Yep. And so that would only be.
City Hall.
I think that's, yeah. That would be what, twenty twenty-nine? And that only way that would, we would do an asphalt parking lot is if we don't have any plan for doing a city hall. I mean, I don't want to spend, I don't want to spend a million dollars on this building and then move out. I don't want to spend two hundred grand on a parking lot here and then go, hey, see you later, we're out of here.
This parking lot wouldn't cost two hundred grand. That whole parking lot back there was under two hundred grand.
Yep. And again, two hundred grand is twenty twenty-nine, I don't know.
Is it? Or cannot be shot?
The asphalt back here?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty well shot.
It's in some rough shape, yeah.
She's, she's pretty well taken care of.
You've got to drive in certain areas and not in others.
Like I said, the only reason we do that, that's why it's in twenty-nine is so that we, if we have no direction for a fire or a new city hall, we need to have something.
Okay. Okay, so are we good?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
On item Q.
We're only an hour and forty minutes behind schedule. It's good. We're doing great.
Amy, you told me eight thirty. We're relisting with these timestamps. I'm just going to throw it out there. You, you know who you're working with.
I know. All right.
Not okay.
Anybody got a question on payment claims?
David does.
Give me a motion of second first and then we can.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, go ahead, Dave.
I, I just had one question on page one seventy-nine there, and this is charged to admin. It says annual membership fee twenty twenty-six. I was just curious, membership to what?
What is, how much is it?
Eighteen hundred.
Good question.
What page was that, Dave?
That is, I know what that is, yep. So I remember what that is. So that is my peer compass group that I'm part of this year for CE, Basic Community Continuing Education, and then my meeting once a month with the administrators in the area that I meet with. And that's through, I did it through last year. I mean, it was really great to have this year because I was able to bounce a lot of things off the city admins and I would like to look at it next year again, so that's the request. Full request slash payment.
That's all I had.
Anybody else?
Uh-uh.
All right, any, oh, we got a motion of second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries five to zero. Item R, Maple Court.
Do you want to present it or it's up to you?
It's going to be longer to walk up there. So, um, as the councils were, a quick trip opened or started in early October on Maple Court. Shortly thereafter, we started receiving complaints about semi-trucks that were parked on the street and were prohibiting two-way traffic. Staff did go out there, I'm going to say a handful of times. One of which we noticed trucks parked on one side of the road. There's a photo that's provided. Oh, actually, we've got a slide of it. So it's very, you can see where trucks on both sides of the road would prohibit traffic, two-way traffic from accessing other businesses on Maple Court.
So are they parking there because the stalls are full?
When I was, took this picture, there were empty stalls there. So the theory is, is that it's just more convenient to park on the street and run in there and run out again versus backing into a space.
Sure. I'd make a motion to.
I would make a motion, yeah, I'll second.
Okay, I'll give that. Dave and then Scott, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Here is five to zero. And if there are no objections, adjourn. Right, adjourn.